Evening. We're going to get this meeting started. And first, I would like to read the city's land acknowledgement. The West Hollywood City Council acknowledges that the land on which we gather and that is currently known as the City of West Hollywood is the occupied, unceded, seized territory of the Gabriel Leno Tongva and the Gabriel Leno Kish peoples. I'm calling this meeting of the June 23, 2025 City Council Meeting to order. It is 6:03 PM. And will our special guest Jasper Gopaul please come up to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with its stance under God, under God invisible with truth and justice for all.
City Clerk, may we please have a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Hing.
Here.
Councilmember Meister.
Here.
Vice Mayor Heilmann.
Here.
Mayor Byers.
Here.
And we have a call.
Thank you so much. We'll move to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff on tonight's agenda, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. I want to share for the public that there was a public hearing that was noticed for parking meter fees. And because it involved fees, there were two noticing requirements under the law. However, ultimately, that item was never placed on the final agenda, and that is why it is not listed as a public hearing this evening. I also want to indicate that staff is requesting that item E1, which is the Drone as First Responder Pilot Program update, if the council would indulge hearing that item prior to the public hearings.
That works for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And are there any changes from any of my colleagues? Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'll actually maybe go from the beginning this time and make it a little bit more organized for everyone. I realized my issues before, which are many. I would like to know if we could move item E3, the out, update on the Athlete Fund Pride House event, to consent?
I have comments.
All right. It's gonna be a fun night. Update on the city's plan for the 2028 Games. All right. Buckle up. Response to fires. All right. Okay. Do you have substantial comments or that would change the item?
Substantial comments.
Okay. But we're gonna be here for a while. All right. City of Hermosa Beach Exchange for Proposal for Local Return Funds. All right.
Can we routinely put those on consent? We never have any discussion on them.
Which item was that?
The assignment.
F1.
It's F1.
Prop C, Prop A.
Oh, yeah. The microphone.
Better record that.
The reason they go on a business item is because it's unallocated funds. But if the council wants to just have those items be on consent, even though they're unallocated funds, we can do that going forward. We'll note that in the items.
Yeah. I mean, it's unallocated funds, but we actually save money by doing it.
F2, local policy to defend city officials and employees. Great. The, well, I guess it's mine, but public safety sirens for emergency alerts.
I think F3 is okay.
F3. Endometriosis, Marinerous in Education, F4. The domestic policy, domestic partnership policy for polycouples?
I have comments.
You have comments. All right. Reaffirm the City of West Hollywood's film friendliness. F6. Cool. And then I'll, it's mine, but the sponsorship of the screening of the studio one forever.
Yes.
All right. Sounds great. That's.
Are there any other changes from my colleagues? I was going to make comments about item B7 that's on the consent agenda, and hopefully, as it's an arts-related item, we could hear it alongside the other two arts-related items. Well, I mean, the one that's, but, yeah, okay.
Yep. And I'd actually like to pull from Consent B11. That's the approval of Amendment 4 to the Agreement of Services with MV Transportation.
Okay.
And which item? Madam Mayor, did you talk about comments for that?
B7, which is the art plan for the West Hollywood Aquatic and Recreation Center at West Hollywood Park.
Cool.
So I have that we are pulling, pulling items B7 and B11 from Consent and adding to Consent items F7, F6, F4, F3, F1. And I believe that was it.
To F2?
Thank you. F2, no, not F2.
Not F2?
No, F2 wasn't.
F2 stays for discussion.
The local policy to defend city officials and employees? We're keeping that?
To, yeah, for discussion.
I thought that went to consent.
I said no.
Okay.
So I was the one that said no. That's why I'm saying it's staying on the agenda.
Oh, it was you.
I have one question for B7. Which item would you want to hear that with?
Next to the other arts-related items. I'm flipping to find it now. It's E4.
E4, okay.
That way, our arts team just needs to come up the one time.
Anyone interested in D1 going? That's the resolution of the City Council authorizing temporary parking requirements for employee and residential use.
No.
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 Okay.
All right.
Okay. So F1, F3, F4, F6, F7. We will hear B7 with E4, and B11 is moving to excluded consent, and we're going to hear the drone item prior to the public hearings.
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. And can my colleagues quickly review the agenda and report any Levine Act disclosures that you may have? Anything?
No.
No? Okay. Terrific. We will move on to adjournment motions. Do any of my colleagues have any adjournment motions this evening?
I have two, Mayor.
Please.
I have one, Mayor.
We'll start with Vice Mayor, and then we'll come to you, Councilmember.
I would request that we adjourn in memory of Eric Baumann. He passed away on June 16th at the age of 66 following a long illness. He was known by many as a nurse-on-call. He spent decades as a critical care registered nurse. That same sense of caring led him to become an accomplished leader in the Democratic Party. He served as the Chair of the Los Angeles Democratic Party, as well as the Chair of the California Democratic Party. Eric is survived by his husband and partner of 42 years, Michael Andrejic. I would request that we adjourn in memory of Eric. I'd also request that we adjourn tonight in memory of Sandy Hutchins, who passed away on June 10th at the age of 80. He was born in North Carolina. He later moved to Los Angeles and West Hollywood, where he was a business owner and a dedicated community leader. Sandy owned Angel City Gym in West Hollywood, and he served on the boards of the West Hollywood Chamber of Commerce and the Business Improvement District for the Arts. He also chaired the Board of Van Ness Recovery House, and he was deeply involved in philanthropic efforts, particularly with LGBTQ recovery and advocacy. He will be remembered for his generous spirit and his commitment to the community. I would request that we adjourn in his memory as well.
Of course. Thank you. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'd like to request that we adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Hermine Fishman-Horowitz, the beloved mother of our friend and community member Ed Horowitz, who passed away on June 20th, 2025, just one day after celebrating her 88th birthday. Hermine was a remarkable woman, a devoted wife, a loving mother, grandmother, great-grandmother, and a dear friend to many in the community. Her greatest wish was to reach her birthday, and she did, surrounded by her children, her husband of over 70 years, and a family that adored her. She smiled as they sang to her and peacefully took her last breath the next day. Hermine lived a full and joyful life. She was the cool mom that everyone wanted to be around, always welcoming friends into her home with warmth and grace. She had an infectious laugh, a radiant smile, and a beautiful presence that made people feel seen and loved. Even in her final years, she carried herself with elegance, never without makeup, and always looking like she was heading somewhere special. The love she shared with her husband was extraordinary, an inseparable pair who walked through life hand in hand simply because they wanted to. Her final weeks were spent ensuring that her family would be okay right up until the end. That was who she was, always thinking of others. To Ed and the entire Horowitz family, we offer our deepest condolences. Hermine's life was a gift, and her memory will continue to be a blessing to everyone who knew her. May tonight's meeting be adjourned in Hermine's memory. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I have three adjournment motions to add. First, we'll adjourn in memory of Evelyn Cohen. Evelyn was, I'm sorry, Evelyn Harris. Evelyn Cohen was born on July 16, 1933, in Montreal, Canada. She married Benjamin Harris in December 1950 and had three children, Joseph, Michael, and Roxanne, and moved her family to West Hollywood in 1966. Evelyn was a bookkeeper by trade, but always aiming for higher education. She received many accreditations and certificates and field that expanded her horizons. In the late 1970s, she became quite the entrepreneur and opened a business on the boardwalk of Venice Beach. Evelyn always loved people, but it was the disenfranchised, especially the gay community, which led her to helping those less fortunate than she. Evelyn befriended gays at a time when the gay community and its people were being put out by the very people that should have loved them, their families. She took in those living with AIDS and HIV and assisted them in any way she could, which led her to housing them in her own home. Evelyn did the same thing for the senior citizens in her community as well. She was quite a force. Family meant everything to Evelyn. She raised her granddaughter Melissa, whom she loved very, very much. In 2018, Evelyn was diagnosed with Alzheimer's, and she was lovingly cared for by Benjamin Wheeler and his partner Dominic, her caregivers who loved her as family. Evelyn succumbed to her long and brave battle with dementia on June 10, 2025. She was 92 years old. This one is very personal. I would like to adjourn tonight's memory in honor and memory of a friend, Casey Downs. Casey's life ended on Thursday, June 12, 2025. Casey was born in the small town of Salome, Arizona, where he played high school football for the Fighting Frogs and graduated as the first in his family to be college-bound and one of only in his small town of 1,000 people. In his 35 years on this earth, Casey made tremendous impact as a friend to many, including me and my partner Austin, who met Casey as his freshman roommate in college at NAU. Austin and Casey were best friends when I met and fell in love with Austin, and Austin was the best man in Casey's wedding. Casey was a loyal friend with a wild sense of humor and enjoyed letting people think he was not as smart as he truly was. He had deep confidence in who he was, and that brought tremendous strength to the people all around him. Casey became an amazing father and a loving partner, and he is survived by his wife Kelsey and his beautiful daughters Anne and Sloan, and his parents David and Sandy, and his brother Dane, and his community of friends who will miss him and love him very much, including myself. And finally, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Minnesota State Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband Mark Hortman. Minnesota State Representative Melissa Hortman and her husband Mark Hortman were fatally shot early Saturday morning, June 14, in their Brooklyn Park home by a person impersonating a police officer whom they had served with in state leadership in the state of Minnesota. They leave behind two children, Colin and Sophie. The gunman had also shot Senator John Hoffman and his wife Yvette in their Champlin home, and thankfully, the Hoffman survived the shooting. Mark is remembered as a fiercely funny, incredibly kind, and deeply protective of his wife. He loved mountain biking, fine whiskeys, music, his family, and playing pool. Melissa Hortman will be remembered as a political giant in Minnesota. Both Democrats and Republicans have referred to her as the most consequential Speaker of the House in the history of the state, where she served from 2019 to 2025. Melissa became interested in being a politician at age 10 while watching coverage of the 1980 presidential election. But Melissa's political career almost ended before it began. She lost her first two races and had to be convinced to run a third time, becoming first elected to the state legislature in 2004. She was known for her focus on solutions. She rose through the legislature while continuing to prioritize environmental, energy, and transportation issues, among other topics, eventually serving as Chair of the House Energy Committee from 2013 to 2014. She was the chief author of legislation that created Minnesota's solar energy standard, a monumental bill signed into law in 2013. And in 2020, Melissa Hortman helped negotiate a police reform bill that limited the use of neck restraints and chokeholds, prohibits departments from offering controversial warrior-style training, and creates an independent state unit to investigate when a police officer kills someone or is accused of sexual misconduct. This politically motivated shooting certainly sends chills throughout the country, and I want to be very clear that there is no place for violence in our communities and no place for violence in politics. This is an awful tragedy, a tremendous loss, and certainly a turning point in American politics. It is our responsibility to band together to transform the tenor of our discourse and our interactions for us all. And as Martin Luther King Jr. said, "We adopt the means of nonviolence because our end as a community is to be a community at peace with itself." We will try to persuade with our words, but if our words fail, we will persuade with our actions. This is our call. Thank you. I know I need a deep breath. And we'll now move to our two presentations this evening. And first, let us all recognize our very special guest who got our meeting started, Jasper Gopaul. Thank you so much for being here, seeing the Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna give you a certificate and come up and take a picture with us. Okay. We have two more fantastic people to recognize tonight. And first, it is my honor to recognize Osana Petrosian for her 28 years of outstanding service with the Los Angeles Unified School District. Osana has supported countless students and families in roles such as parent, community representative, office technician, and school administrative assistant, most recently at our very own West Hollywood Elementary, where she has been a beloved and essential part of the school community. The City of West Hollywood commends your dedication, compassion, and tireless service. You have truly made a difference for so many. Congratulations on your retirement, Osana. We wish you all the best in this next chapter. At this time, I would like to invite you up to the dais to take a photo with council and receive your proclamation and recognition.
Good evening, everyone. It was a great pleasure working for West Hollywood Elementary last 13 years. I want to thank to my principal, Dr. Lehman, Mayor Byers, and all council members for this honor. Thank you.
And next, it is my pleasure to recognize an outstanding local talent, Ryan Ovasky. Thank you, Ovasky, who was recently named World Champion Pizzemaker of the Year at the International Pizza Expo. Wait, wait. We've got some more things to say. But you got the right attitude. Ryan is the proud owner of D-Town Pizzeria located right here in West Hollywood, which specializes in Detroit-style pizza and is now a three-time world champion pizzeria. Ryan's creativity, craftsmanship, and commitment to excellence have made his mark, not just locally, but truly on the world stage. The City of West Hollywood proudly celebrates this remarkable achievement and the pride it brings to our community and the deliciousness it brings to our stomachs. We have the chance to try this pizza tonight behind the scenes in the council chambers, and it was truly fantastic. Congratulations, Ryan. We wish you continued success and many more accolades to come. So now, you're welcome to come up and join us for a photo.
Well, nice to meet everyone. Yes, I'm the chef-owner of D-Town Pizzeria. We're just down the street across from Barney's. And I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to give me this award. I just kind of, you know, I really thank everybody, but I want to invite everybody in. I want to get more, more eyes on us. And, you know, we're truly a small business, a small mom-and-pop shop. You know, we care about what we do. We're happy to be in the city and making great pizza. I've been in the restaurant game for 30 years, been a chef by trade, and now I own a small pizzeria here in the city. I've been in California for 16 years. So we're just, you know, we're, we're, me and my, you know, lady are there every day, and we're grinding and trying to serve the community, serve good food, and, and, you know, do the best we can. So I invite everyone in. Come check us out, say hello, and eat some good pizza. All right. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate your time.
His shirt says, "In crust we trust." I love that. Thank you so much. And now, we'll move to public comment. The City Council values your comments. However, pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot take action on items not listed on the posted agenda. The public comment period is limited to 20 minutes with two minutes allotted for each speaker. This public comment period is to address the City Council on Consent Calendar Items, other agenda items if the members of the public cannot be present at the time the item is considered, or items of general interest within the jurisdiction of the City Council. Another period is also reserved for general comment later in the meeting and for those that could not be heard at this time. Public hearing testimony will only be taken at the time of the hearing. If you signed up to speak on both the Consent Calendar Items and General Public Comment, as well as an item that was moved to the Consent Calendar, you may take this public comment period to speak on Consent Calendar Items. You may also sign up to speak during the second public comment period for your general public comment. Lastly, speakers should not bring any items to the podium other than a written prepared statement or writing materials. City Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Thank you, Mayor. We have 11 individuals in chambers and currently one individual in Zoom.
Terrific. We will start with those in chambers. We should be able to get through everyone. First, I have Michaela Buckley, followed by Kevin Burton, and then James Babin.
I had a clarifying question. If I'm speaking on the agenda item, should I speak later, or is now okay?
So you signed up to speak on item B12?
Yes.
So that's what you should speak on now?
Great.
My understanding is you didn't have a general public comment. So this time, you'll speak on B12? And then when we call B7, which will be heard later with E3, I believe? Then we will, you'll do B7. So this is just B12?
Perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
My name is Michaela Buckley. I'm with Theater Commons Los Angeles, which is a service organization dedicated to theaters in Los Angeles. For item B12, I highly encourage the council to follow the staff recommendations to approve For item B-12, I highly encourage the council to follow the staff recommendations to approve Amendment 1 to the Agreement Services with Perkins &amp; Will Incorporated, and to authorize the deputy city manager or urban design and architect studio manager to approve the change orders to the agreement, and to authorize the city manager or designee to execute documents incident to this agreement for the architecture. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Kevin Burton, followed by James Babin, and then Kate Hogan.
Good evening, council. I'm Kevin Burton, a resident of West Hollywood, and I've been involved for many years in working with the community to improve emergency preparedness in the city, especially the CERT Community Emergency Response Team program. I'm here to comment on item F-3, the study of emergency sirens or other alternative approaches to public announcements in cases of emergency in the city. And firstly, I want to thank Carl Cronin, who suggested the emergency sirens to me and wrote an e-comment to you folks at an earlier meeting. He's always thinking about these items. It is full of ideas, and I thank him for that. This item, emergency sirens, the key word here is redundancy, because the city has a number of outreach channels, but not every individual will be in contact with any of these traditional outreach channels. And that's why the city is considering an emergency siren, just concern all of the people who are visitors in town, who might not be clued into any of the digital outreach channels at all, right? And their phones might not get emergency alerts. So an emergency siren fills that niche among others, even among residents in West Hollywood. And I just want to kind of preemptively comment, there are a couple of options that will be studied. One is an emergency siren system, of which there are a number of possibilities. The other is having law enforcement drive around, making these announcement initiatives at the state level. And I would like to suggest that those two are not mutually exclusive. One can have the big sirens and then follow it up with law enforcement vehicles repeating the message. Thank you.
Thank you. James Babin, followed by Kate Hogan, followed by Carl Zerpel.
Good evening. I'm James Babin. I run a company called Barnigat Light Productions. I'm an independent film producer, a SAG-AFTRA member, and I'm volunteer with the organization Cal United Stay in L.A. that's working to bring production home. And while I don't live in West Hollywood, I really appreciate us being invited to speak tonight, and it kind of makes sense, because what are we in L.A.? But we weave together all our neighborhoods and all our stories, and how do we do that better than through film? So we're really grateful for this motion, F-6, to reaffirm West Hollywood as a film-friendly city, because your commitment in this motion to faster permitting, better incentives, and stronger partnerships is going to set a model, or can set a model, for so many other districts in our area, including the City of Los Angeles. And commercial shoots, I might want to add, can really benefit from this, because commercials, which have been left out as part of some of the larger conversations, benefit greatly from having faster permitting. And West Hollywood, with all the wonderful buildings and homes, provides such a good location for that. And making it easier to film here means lots of more jobs for local crews and more work and income for small businesses, and more stories that will be told right here in California and West Hollywood. And so just thanks for your leadership and for helping us bring production home.
Thank you. Kate Hogan, followed by Carl Zerpel, followed by Lynn Etsera.
Hi, my name is Kate Olgin, and I'm the head of Legislative Affairs for Stay in L.A. and California United, a grassroots coalition of entertainment industry professionals working to retain and grow production across California. I am in full support of Agenda Item F-6, which is the implementation of a five-part series of recommendations to reaffirm West Hollywood as a film-friendly city. In the last three months, I've met with the majority of L.A. City Council members, L.A. County supervisors, and elected officials in Burbank, Culver City, and now West Hollywood. My message to them and to you tonight is that our entertainment industry is at a crossroads. And while there is still hope that production can return to our region at scale, that hope comes with an asterisk. Production and jobs will return only if we act now. And that means cities must take proactive steps, like the ones West Hollywood is putting forward, to ensure that we are cost-competitive with other jurisdictions and that our permitting process is easy and seamless. I also wanted to share with the council that Stay in L.A. is in early discussions with Supervisor Lindsey Horvath's office to convene all 88 cities in L.A. County to explore cross-jurisdictional MOUs and MSAs that would align permitting costs, personnel requirements, and processes wherever possible. And I want to invite West Hollywood to be a leader in this effort, just as you've been a leader in advancing this five-part plan. And finally, as a coalition of industry workers, producers, and vendors, Stay in L.A. wants to offer West Hollywood support, insights, and partnership to help you bring these recommendations to life. We look forward to continuing this conversation and collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Zerpel, followed by Lynn Etsera, followed by J.T. Parr.
Hi there. Longtime resident, first-time speaker. I guess what I'm proposing is just hopefully something that will provide some pedestrian safety, and also just some fact, I think it will help out, you know, just residents, whether or not disabled, there's people that need maybe additional time, and I recognize that at the stoplight, sorry, a little compassionate here. So the traffic light on San Vicente and Santa Monica Boulevard, what I think as a resident is if there's maybe a pedestrian cycle that comes along, what I notice is that there's people that are either running across the light to try to make it, and I think especially during business hours, especially during, in people that are possibly intoxicated, and if there's not enough time to maybe go cross that light, you know, just, I guess what I want to say is if there's a crisscross grid across Santa Monica and San Vicente, I think it will do a lot of great things for the city. I think people in wheelchairs will have enough time, hopefully, to cross the light, and it will just give a little bit more of an opportunity to safety all around. So that's all.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Lynn Etsera, West Hollywood. I, because of an extended stay in the hospital, was too weak to participate in Gay Pride West Hollywood, but late Sunday I went to check it out, and I was enormously impressed. The person that put together the entrance with the disco balls, kudos to that person, and there were so many booths. It was just like, wow. So then I went to L.A.'s, and L.A. had a boxer's ring as a stage. And if 50, over 50 years ago, when I first came out, somebody told me that I would go to a gay pride and a boxer's ring would be a stage, I wouldn't believe it. I still don't. What I want to explicitly express in my total joy is I've been going to protest since Vietnam, and every gay protest I went to in March, because Harry Hay would be there and I'd get a magical kiss. And the No Kings March was the most incredible, fabulous, incredible march I've ever, I've ever seen in all my life. It was just phenomenal. The amount of people holding signs, and the signs were brilliantly written, and I'm thinking to myself, man, we've got a huge community of really intelligent gay people in this city now. It was incredible, and per capita, so many signs to how many people were at the margin was wondrous. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I agree. J.T. Parr, followed by Chad Kroger, followed by Noel Stemmon.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. This is my colleague, J.T.
What up?
First off, John, big ups on that state senate run. We're rooting for you. Hell, yeah. So we come to you today to combat an epidemic. If we don't cure this thing, all will be lost. Young men in America are not boning.
But somehow, that is not even the worst part. It is part of something bigger called sadness.
Dudes today are sad. They have a grim spiritual, financial, and sexual outlook, and no one is helping them besides Jordan Peterman and Dax Shepnerd. J.T. and I will not stand by and allow this brutal bummer to continue unbeknowned. We have been to council 78 times with initiatives, and the GOV, AKA U, have not done one. So we are going to take matters into our own hands in a nice way. We're going to coach these dudes on how to be stoked.
We will be creating a series. We don't have a name yet, but we have a mission. In each episode, we will coach a young man and help them overcome fears and achieve their dreams. We are going to mobilize an army of disaffected weirdos and bring them into the light of being cool. They say that a hero can save us. I'm not going to stand here and wait.
Arnold Schwarzenegger.
And finally, I want to give council a lot of credit for your housing reform ordinance. I think that's going to add a lot of much-needed supply to our housing shortage and bring down the overall cost of living. So kudos to you guys for making moves.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Noel Stemmon, followed by Gina Carbure. Sorry if I'm saying these names improperly. Followed by Josh Christian.
Hi. I don't know how to follow that, but I'll try. My name's Noel Stemmon. I'm here to speak on behalf of F-6. I'm a showrunner. I'm a volunteer member of Stay in L.A. as well. I want to express my huge gratitude to you guys for launching this film-friendly initiative. It's so important right now. We have been working on bringing film production back since we formed our grassroots organization after the fires to help bring film production back as part of the fire recovery and also just as a generally huge need for the city. And we've been working on, on the state level, but the local level is so drastically important. And I think people up in Sacramento don't even understand how important it is to, to work on all the permitting processes down here. And, you know, as you guys said in the report, it's so clear that in addition to the film production jobs, helping all the film workers, there is such a ripple effect across all small businesses in town, all the restaurants, the hotels, the coffee shops, every worker that depends on a robust film community. And just as an example of that, we recently filmed a testimonial with the very famous multi-generational restaurant Casa Vega in Studio City. They were in danger of closing, and they were pretty much considering closing until they were, they had what TV show come film for one day in the restaurant, and that one day of filming was enough to keep them open and to pay their 70 employees and to continue to be open to this day. So film and small business is very, very interconnected. And I know that there's a lot of small businesses in this city, in West Hollywood, that have that same story that Casa Vega had. So I thank you so much. And also, as Kate said, any help you guys need putting together the permitting proposals, we are a group of filmmakers. We have vast experience in this area. We are available to you at any time. Please call us, email us, we'll be available. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Gina Carbure, followed by Josh Christian.
Hi, my name's Gina Carbone.
Carbone, oh, sorry.
I'm a business owner here in West Hollywood, Buzz Barbers. I just want to acknowledge Danny. He's helped me so much in the last, since he's been a council member. He's a customer at our shop, and anytime I've had any needs, he's quick on response and has resolved a lot of issues for me. Where our shop is located is on the corner of, like, Havenhurst and Santa Monica. So that closet and that whole back parking lot has been a huge issue for me as a business owner of the riffraff that is back there. And his initiative has helped me get the city ambassadors that are there. And I think a lot of people that even come into my shop complain all the time that they don't do anything, and I want to acknowledge that they do a lot. The amount of times that I've used them for me as not dealing with people that seem erratic, I, now that I have them behind there, there is, first of all, way less of an issue back there, just because there's eyes back there. So when there's eyes back there, people don't do what they used to be doing back there. And they are my direct contact, and they almost 100% of the time resolve the issue for me. And if they can't, then they usually reach out to the law enforcement to handle it. But I just want to acknowledge him and, and just to let you know that this, that I believe that the ambassadors as well are doing like a heck of a job to really help the city stay clean and stay safe. And even the amount that is cleaned around our city, I don't think a lot of people that actually are residents here that aren't business owners don't realize how much that they do, and just think that, like, it's constantly dirty or there's constantly riffraff. And they're on the ground every day, like, really helping that. So I just want to acknowledge all that. So thank you.
Thank you. Gina Carbone, sorry for that the whole time. Josh Christian. And if anybody else in chambers wishes to speak, please get your name in.
Hi, council. My name's Josh Christian. I'm an eight-year resident. I'm also a business license commissioner, but I'm here speaking for myself, but also for about two dozen people that gather every weeknight at Plummer Park to exercise our dogs and have a good time. So I'm speaking about B-14. We're really excited about it. We're hoping that it's a starting off point and not an ending point for facilities like that in the park. I know that my neighbors, were they here, would want me to say that they're a little bit frustrated about the outreach that, that went in back in 2022, because we're there every weeknight, and a lot of folks felt like they didn't get the chance to give input and weren't told about it. But I've already sermonized to a couple of you about this, so I won't go on and on about it here. You'll hear from us in the few, like, the next few weeks or months, because we're hoping to also expand to do some limited off-leash hours only on weeknights in Plummer Park. So your offices might get some calls about that. Just wanted to put that on your radar screen. I understand there was a little bit debate of debate about AstroTurf versus Mulch in the park, which I recently heard about. So thank you all for choosing AstroTurf instead of Mulch, or no one would have been able to use it. And I just wanted to give you guys a standing invitation. There's people there, probably 10, 20 people at the park every weeknight from 6:00 to 6:30, and people would love to meet their council members. Come on down.
Thank you. Is that our final public speaker in chambers? Terrific. We'll go to Zoom.
Our next speaker is Lynn Russell. Lynn, please press star six to unmute. You'll have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Byers and fellow council members. This is Lynn Russell of West Hollywood. This particular item, B-14, the estate design contract for Plummer Park Off-Leash Dog Park, appears peculiarly out of sequence in the park improvement plan, which has been in discussion actually since 2011. That's 14 years. The requested budget for this temporary installation is $985,000-plus. Why is this peculiar? Well, if we were discussing horses and carts, this would surely qualify as example of the cart before the horse theory, the immediate evidence of which could be found in Hard Park, likewise another cultural landmark. The point is that the overall scope of design in all aspects of the redesign, which has not yet been, not yet been accomplished, or has not even gotten out of the starting gate, perhaps the state design direction could be approved as a bench contract without commencing any work to avoid future demolition and additional expense. And rightfully, S.W.A., the team chosen to do the park, should not be tied to the estate's plan. This once lovely and relaxing landmark park has unnecessarily suffered years of neglect, however is loved by the community. It deserves to have the correct and expeditious redesign seamlessly executed and restored to its original quiet ambiance. Central Park in Manhattan, designed by Frederick Olmsted and Calvert-Vois, was never redesigned or allowed to deteriorate since 1858. That's 150 years, because they got it right the first time. Councilmember Meister agreed with the idea, that idea, at the recent ad hoc meeting. Peace new execution without a yet-to-be-developed master plan would not only not be the most holistic approach or be in the best interest of Plummer Park and the community. Please take the opportunity now to get this project correct from this point forward. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you, Lynn. Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our first public comment period. We will turn to the city manager for your report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I just have a couple of brief comments. Thank you to all the public commenters for your Thank you to all the public commenters for your comments. There was the comment from Carl Zierfeld regarding the light at Sammerson's Day in Santa Monica. We will take a look at it, at the light itself, but also we'll contact him if he left his information. I see he's no longer here in the chambers, but we'll take a look at the light itself.
Doesn't that crosswalk already have a diagonal approach?
No.
It was in the plan before when we did that at Santa Monica and Robertson, and that was one that was included. So what, what happened?
We'll look into that if there's a plan for it, but it currently does not have.
But Santa Monica and Robertson does.
I think it was a temporary pilot for Santa Monica and Robertson.
And it wasn't ever across. It was in all directions, a little different.
Yeah, I mean, like, the same thing.
I don't think it worked.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I don't think we promoted it either.
I did want to just take a few moments to talk about some of the recent immigration and customs enforcement raids by ICE in our neighboring cities. As the city of West Hollywood continues to oppose these raids, which are disruptive, discriminatory, and destabilizing, our immigrant communities are not a danger. They are vital contributors to the social, cultural, and economic strength of our region, our state, and our nation. We continue to stand with our neighboring cities in speaking out against these raids. To date, there have been no confirmed reports of ICE raids in West Hollywood. We are currently working closely with our law enforcement partners at the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department as this remains a fluid situation. Importantly, the Sheriff's Department has released a statement with important information for the West Hollywood community. The Sheriff's Department does not enforce criminal immigration laws, nor does it ask about an individual's immigration status when responding to calls for service. The sheriff's focus is to maintain peace, uphold public safety, and protect the rights of all residents, not to assist with immigration actions or operations. The city of West Hollywood and the Sheriff's Department are aligned in protecting the rights of all people in our community regardless of immigration status. The city's executive team and management team are meeting tomorrow to solidify protocols so that we can be prepared as a city if ICE agents visit city facilities. We remain committed to seamless operations and the safety of our staff and the community. We know the community is concerned. Everyone, regardless of immigration status, has constitutional rights when entering, interacting with ICE agents. These include the right to remain silent, the right to refuse unwarranted searches, and the right to an attorney. If ICE visits your home, workplace, or stops you in a public or in your vehicle, you do not have to open the door or answer questions without a valid judge-signed warrant. Always remain calm, do not resist physically, and document interactions if possible. The city recommends that community members learn more, know your rights, and the city urges that people who visit the Los Angeles County Know Your Rights website for more information, legal resources, and facts in multiple languages. That can be found at OIA.lacounty.gov/KYR. And that concludes my comments, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilmember Hank, did you have a question for city manager?
Thank you, mayor. City manager, thank you for the remarks. Can you please confirm with the community if the city of West Hollywood has any agreement with DOJ and ICE and if the L.A. County Sheriff's Department has any agreement with ICE and if there are any detainees that they're not held in our jail cells here in the city?
Yes. The city of West Hollywood, nor does the L.A. County Sheriff's Department have any agreement with ICE to hold any detainees for ICE. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the fiscal impact on consent calendar.
Thank you, mayor. The fiscal impact on tonight's consent calendar with the addition of items F-1, F-3, F-4, F-6, F-7, and the removal of items B-7 and B-11 is $31,572,715 in expenditures, $800,000 in revenue, and $1,200 in waived fees. And there is a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent calendar. And the motion passes 5-0.
Wonderful. Thank you. So we will move to our first item. Again, we're taking these items out of order, so we're going to go with the study session on drone as a first responder, which I believe is item E1.
Thank you, and good evening, mayor, vice mayor, and members of the city council. I'm Danny Rivas, Director of Community Safety for the city of West Hollywood. Also joining at the table with me on this item is Assistant Sheriff Myron Johnson and Commander Jennifer C. Two. So the item before you this evening is an update regarding the Drone as First Responder Pilot Program. As the city council is aware, this has been a pilot program that's been in the making for almost two years now. There's been robust outreach with various commissions and advisory boards as well as city council discussions as it relates to the Drone as First Responder program. Last year in July, we brought forth an item working with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department in terms of proposed draft policies as it relates to the Drone as First Responder program, the real-time watch center and fixed real-time cameras. So fast-forwarding until this year, we've been, of course, working diligently with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department to hopefully get the Drone as First Responder program up and running. We did provide an update in the past where our tentative operational date was to launch prior to WeHo Pride of 2025, but we recently had been informed by the Sheriff's Department some new developments. And so that is what this item is being put forward to you all for. And so now I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Sheriff Myron Johnson to provide some additional context regarding that.
Good afternoon, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. Again, my name is Myron Johnson. I'm the Assistant Sheriff over patrol operation for the department. And in that role, I oversee four patrol divisions, including North Patrol, which West Hollywood is located. Again, with me is Commander Jennifer C. Two from our North Patrol Division, as well as Captain Robbie Royster in the audience from our Special Enforcement Bureau. From the department's perspective, we have always had a positive working relationship, one that's been open, transparent, and collaborative. And I hope you feel the same way. And to let you know that we are committed to maintaining the positive relationship now and beyond into the future. And that's why we're here this evening, to speak to you about maintaining our positive relationship and to assure you that the interest we share in utilizing technology more effectively for public safety purposes aligns with yours. First, the sheriff and I share the desire for utilizing our unmanned aerial system or aircraft system, excuse me, UAS, more commonly referred to as drones, that technology effectively and more robustly, particularly in a patrol environment. Technology, as you know, saves resources for our department, and quite frankly, it helps save lives. At this time, we have to be mindful that some members of our community are highly suspicious about this technology and their capabilities. They have concerns how this technology is going to be used. We've heard invasion of privacy. We've heard overpolicing. So people are concerned that they could potentially be used for inappropriate or improper purposes. Although we respect the rights of those individuals, that's why our department is very transparent about the use of technology. I mean, we post technology on our websites about different pieces of technology that we utilize, including our drones. That's also posted on our website. It's the department opinion that this advanced equipment has played and will continue to play an important part in making law enforcement efforts much more effective. And I want to thank the council for your continued support of public safety initiatives and technology enhancements. As you are aware, the implementation of the UAS technology has been paused because the intended use of this equipment does not currently align with our existing department policy. While the procurement of this equipment was well-intentioned and focused on enhancing public safety, the specific applications envisioned fall outside of our established guidelines. Our current UAS policy, which was modified in the year 2024, specifically provides that UAS operations are limited to emergency, life-threatening situations such as search and rescue missions and tactical operations. A UAS shall not be used for non-emergent surveillance missions. And the policy also states that the default mode, excuse me, is non-recording on the system. So when you track our department's chronological development of our policy in a timeline fashion, in 2023, two years ago, the department began efforts to update the UAS policy, which was enacted in 2018. In 2023, the department presented its proposal and policy changes to our civilian oversight committee. At that meeting, three stations from the North Patrol Division, including West Hollywood, participated in the presentations, essentially seeking to allow local station-level deployment of a UAS system. Following that presentation, ongoing discussions took place between the department, our civilian oversight commission, and the Office of Inspector General. As a result of those discussions, the department launched a pilot program for patrol stations, allowing them for the first time to acquire and utilize UAS devices in 2023. And under the new pilot program, it was proposed that stations could acquire UAS and license department members to operate them. Stations no longer had to rely solely on our Special Enforcement Bureau for deployment, especially when they had extended ETAs that were too far away or were unavailable. Stations still had to follow existing UAS requirements, including getting authorization from our Special Enforcement Bureau before deployment, only using a UAS in defined emergency situations, adhering to the policy which is non-recording as a default mode. And the UAS had to remain prohibited for non-emergent surveillance operations. And in 2024, the most recent version of the policy was approved and formally permitted the pilot program at approved stations without changing the rules, I'm sorry, the core rules of the governing usage of the UAS system. And finally, the policy allowing limited station-based UAS usage under the pilot program is still in effect and reflects the current LASD policy. Now, despite the clear intent and structure of the pilot program, it became evident that through recent conversations, some confusion remained regarding what the pilot program actually allowed. After speaking with those directly involved, it's clear that it was a significant misunderstanding about the nature of a pilot program. The command staff at West Hollywood believed the pilot program allowed for broader flexibility and the opportunity to attest new applications beyond what department policy permitted at the time. While we believe that this interpretation was sincere, it was incorrect. And as I mentioned, the policy did not expand the terms of use. It maintains strict limits even within the pilot program framework. Now, we take full responsibility for that confusion and the miscommunication that occurred along the way. And I want to emphasize that it was a genuine misunderstanding. I've personally met with many of those people involved in the decision process. I reviewed their communications, and I'm confident that there was no ill intent. The misunderstanding rooted in, was rooted in unclear messaging and assumptions, not in misconduct. That said, the responsibility lies with us, the department. We apologize for the lack of clarity and the breakdown in internal communications between West Hollywood staff and department policymakers. This experience has highlighted the need for clearer guidance, especially when it comes to introducing new technologies with nearly all of our contract cities have a desire for in support of our shared mission of public safety. It's understandable that people get a little excited about the potential of innovative tools to help us do our police work. But with that excitement must come clear understanding that the adoption of new technology requires careful coordination. We have to ensure that all the stakeholders are informed, that transparency remains central in how we operate as a department. And that process, though sometimes slow and frustrating for some of our people, is essential in maintaining public trust and institutional integrity. This is the broader context that is what brought me here today to speak with you. While the command staff at West Hollywood worked in good faith with city leadership to explore the acquisition and deployment of drones, there was not enough engagement with internal units within the department responsible for evaluating and setting operational policies. Their intentions were focused on innovation and public safety and officer safety as well. But the internal processes for introducing new tools, particularly those with legal operational implications, requires coordination and multiple internal and external stakeholders, including our oversight bodies. Unfortunately, that coordination did not occur at the necessary level. There was no ill intent, like I mentioned before. This case was a case where the pace of innovation overtook the internal communication vetting processes. While external discussions were taking place, the necessary internal alignment was lacking, particularly around the authorization scope of equipment use. In short, West Hollywood command staff was trying to do the right thing, but our internal systems didn't catch the disconnect in time. And for that, we, the LASD, take full responsibility. In terms of moving forward, we believe we can address the problem, and we also believe we can address it to your satisfaction. At least, that is my hope. We are aware that based on communications with the department, you invested considerable funds in purchasing technology. We are extremely mindful of that commitment you've made to our department and providing the city with valuable resources to enhance public safety in West Hollywood. We appreciate this report, or, excuse me, the support. And in turn, we want to support you and your efforts to enhance policing services here in the West Hollywood community. The sheriff has directed us to immediately begin the process of updating our UAS policies. We no longer believe are contemporary and reflect the needs and realities of today's environment. He has asked our team to review the policies and make recommendations on updating them to include the ability to record, using drones as a first responder, and other practices that are being adopted more widely, based on your concepts. We have formed an ad hoc committee. They've already met. They've started gathering information and determining what is going to be the best approach for our department. We have notified our civilian oversight commission, and the chair of that commission has committed to working collaboratively with the Sheriff's Department. Now, of course, when we go before the commission, we would like your support and the support of our other contract cities as we work our way through that process. Although there will be a short delay in implementing a full program that you've envisioned in West Hollywood's, we will allow West Hollywood to use the devices that we have, and I'll have Commander C. Two expand on that, in accordance with our current policy until we can get those policies updated. We are committed to resolving the issue, to ensure technology is used thoroughly, transparently, thoughtfully, and in the interest of public safety. And most importantly, we will work with the city to develop clear, responsible, and legal guidelines for its use. The staff here with me and I are available for any questions that you may have.
So I need to be the... I think your mic. Is it good?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So prior to becoming the commander of North Patrol, I was the captain of Malibu Lost Hills. And we started a drone program, a program that actually Captain Mulder and I kind of discussed. So my jurisdiction was a little bit different. Our plan was to stick to the current policy, buy a drone, and fly it for different calls, right? Whether it's fire, we have a lot of search and rescue operations. We've done it for some tactical situations as well. And it has been a huge success. Actually, I just got a text the other day from a former congressman who said that because of the drone, we found his neighbor who had dementia. It has been hugely successful in the Malibu Lost Hills jurisdiction. And so really, what the Assistant Sheriff and I would like to offer West Hollywood is we have a drone donated. We're ready to do this. And then we can also provide, until your program gets up and running, we can provide a transparency tool, which is called Air Data. It's the same tool that Captain Mulder and I can... It's the same tool that Captain Mulder and Acting Captain Fannie Lampkin has been looking into, which would be a transparency tool. We could have that already funded, as well as provide West Hollywood a drone that you can keep, and the deputies can use it, kind of how Malibu Lost Hills uses it, until we can solidify a drone-as-a-first-responder program, which we are working on right now. I am part of that ad hoc committee.
Thank you. Is that the conclusion of the staff report? Okay, terrific. Do my colleagues want to begin asking questions? I don't see that we have any public comment on this item tonight. Okay, terrific. Yeah, Councilmember Hing.
Thank you so much for the robust report, Assistant Sheriff and Commander and Captain. Welcome to the City of West Hollywood. I appreciate the work that you all do. My day job is, I'm a disability investigator with La Sera, so I work for you guys. When you guys are injured, I take care of Sheriff's Department, as well as the Fire Department. So thank you for the work that you do in protecting our entire community. You know, I see the importance of our drone program, and I just wanted to, I have a couple of questions regarding kind of the timeline as to what happened. I do appreciate your statements about the miscoordination within the department and with the city as well, because that's kind of why I run the situation that we're in now. When did the department identify an issue with the WeHo station to inform the city that, you know, the program that's approved was not going to be able to move forward?
I don't, I don't have that specific date. I know it was sometime this year. Is Captain Lampkin in the audience? I'm sorry, maybe she can expand on the exact date of when that occurred for you.
I don't have the specific timeline in front of me, but I'm gonna go back and look at my emails, but it was in the last couple of months that we, maybe a month and a half that we heard where the communication and within the station and our executives were. It was just recently that we had that. Do you have that timeline?
Okay, I'm sorry, I just found the timeline. Great staff is amazing. April the 23rd, 2025.
And then Director Rivas, when was our program in the City of West Hollywood supposed to go live?
It was supposed to go live by the first weekend in June during Pride, so we had been working since July of last year, when we brought forth an item to the City Council that had the proposed draft policies, station orders. And then in January of this year, we brought forth an item as it relates to a contract agreement with our drone contractor. But we were intending to have everything up and in operation by the first weekend in June.
Thank you. And then, if anybody can explain the difference in what the program that was approved but later withdrawn, the difference between that and the difference in what the department is stating that they will allow West Hollywood to do? Just so that members of the public can get a better understanding of both programs.
Yes, so the drone-as-first-responder is very similar to what Beverly Hills has, right? If you're familiar with their program. The program that we're offering, West Hollywood, right now is something that we can immediately start, and that is because the policy, we would be flying within the policy. And basically, it's to high-risk situations. I used it for a deputy was shot at, and we flew the drone in missing persons, emergency disasters, stuff that sticks to our current policy. And again, we are working hard, the sheriff has made this a priority, that we are to get a draft policy to him soon to get this changed.
But what's the difference between the policy? I'm just, because as a layperson, I kind of want to get a better understanding.
So, and I also have Robbie Royster here that can help out, but basically, and Fannie Lampkin, basically what West Hollywood wants to do is use a person's side of a center, right, the watch center, that will actually be the pilot, right? And then you have a observer, which I believe will be a privately funded, like flying line, right? And in any call for service that meets the high-priority calls, the drone would be launched out, right? And that idea right there actually violates our COA, our condition to fly with the FAA. It currently violates the COA because we have to, the person who operates the drone has to have visual line of sight that is not impaired, that is direct, I mean, glasses okay, but direct line of sight. They can't use a third-party person to watch the drone. So that's something that we have to work on, we have to get our COA changed, which Captain Royster is working on right now.
Thanks for the clarification. And what about the capturing of data? I never heard that being mentioned at all.
The capturing of data, the recording versus, so that is something that the ad hoc committee, right now, we are not recording, our policy says that we do not record, something that, and that's where Air Data comes in. And I know that, I believe the city manager got a view of what Air Data is, and basically, it's a transparency tool that like Chula Vista, some of the leaders in UAS drone technology at police departments are using, and it's a public-facing website where, so I live in my jurisdiction, right? I can go on and say, hey, I saw the drone fly over my house, and I can immediately pull it up. It'll tell me what it flew for, so it'll say, oh, it flew for a missing person, lost hiker or something, and then it'll tell me when it was flying over my house, whether or not the camera was on, and which way the toggle was facing, right? Was it facing up, or was it facing down? And so it's just a way that the community can quickly understand what's happening, and that's really something that we wanted to do in the Malibu Lost Hills area, and I think it would be very beneficial here as well.
And then what about the retainment of the data?
The, how long is it stored on Air Data?
Yeah, I mean, the difference in...
I believe our department policy says we retain that data for two years.
Can you hear me? Okay, all right. So maybe I can clarify a little bit on that. So the current department policy that we have with drone deployments or UAS deployments was codified with our civilian oversight commission. They required steps and approvals for a drone to actually be launched. One of it is that they do have to contact my bureau, Special Enforcement Bureau, have a, we have four trained lieutenants that are on 24 hours, they're trained, they can launch and they cannot. Now, mind you, when that policy was written, it is geared towards my bureau and a tactical element, where we're going inside of a home and along those lines. So the steps that the COC required us to follow and agreed upon was that they had the, pilot station had to notify SEB, had to go through the steps of saying, hey, this is a situation I have, I'd like to push a drone. It can do for fire, disaster response, it can go for search-and-rescue issues, it can go for, it is a little bit broad spectrum as far as any high-risk tactical situation, and that's what my lieutenants are actually very skilled in, in adapting it and learning on other sides. But there is a delay, you know, there is about a 10, 15-minute delay, they have to contact somebody, they have to walk through the process. The other thing, too, is that we have to make a notification to our Aero Bureau so we can have a deconfliction in case the helicopter is overhead, so that they're where the drone is. The other requirement is that we have to notify the COC within 48 hours, that we did push a drone, we have to tell them where it's at, and then we also have to provide that information on our public website. A true DFR program eliminates that step and pushes it all the way down to the station level. So in some situations, stations where you have, the program that you were proposing actually has where the dispatcher or the watch commander can push the button right away and get that drone launched. So in essence, you're going to have that UAS above head providing information probably before law enforcement actually gets there and feeds back to that information. That's what the status is, and that's what the kind of example that the rest of the country is going to, and that's where the sheriff has tasked us with and said that, hey, I want to go to this model and I want to do it now. Now, we have to work with our COC partners, and that, you know, there is some hesitations on their side, but we have brought them in, they are excited. I can tell you that I've had probably 20 to 30 meetings with them individually, interviewing my staff over at SEB. They understand that this is where the public wants to go, they understand that this is where a lot of the contract cities want to go, and they're actually very open to it. But again, they are asking for transparency, they want to make sure that we do it right the first time instead of having to change things down the road. I hope that answers your question, sir.
I think so.
Oh, the data, sorry, the data you're asking. So currently, our policy is that we do not record. That was a request of the COC when we did the initial policy in 2018. If we do have to record, it's retained for two years, unless it's earmarked towards some type of criminal case, then that data recording will fall in line with whatever the data retention is for that criminal case. So it's a murder, it's zero, you know, indefinitely, but that's all based on what the crime is. The model that you were looking at was the 30 days. I can tell you, looking in, being in part of the ad hoc group and looking at some of the other agencies, they're now starting to see where they're starting to get public record acts after 30 days and a longer time. So I think you're going to see a lot of other agencies start modifying that. The group is looking at different numbers, one of them is falling in line with our body worn camera system, just to make it so it's uniform and everybody knows how long we keep that up.
So what will be allowed, have, will be capturing and retaining data be allowed and what the new policy is and what the department is going to allow the city to do?
So that's what we're working on now. I, again, we said in the, it was postponed for a few weeks because of what's been going on, but that's what our committee is working on right now, and we're actually going out to the different agencies, sitting side by side by them, learning best practices and what went right, what went wrong, and taking those best practices back to the department. That way, when we make a policy, it's the right policy for our department, and that's what we will be sending to the executives as our recommendation. And so we're trying to get that done as soon as possible.
And I understand that the City of Cerritos had just got an approval for their UAS program. How does their program differ from, say, Lost Hills and Malibu?
So their program is the Malibu Lost Hills program, and I know Captain Royster can talk on that, but they fly within the current policy.
Correct. Any pilot programs that we have now have to fly underneath our current policy. There is no, there is nothing altered. The City of Malibu Lost Hills has just completed their six-month pilot program, so they're now deemed a official program at the station. However, when I say that, even though a station has a drone program at their station, they're still required under a policy to still contact Special Enforcement Bureau, they still have to contact that lieutenant, they still have to get the authorization before they fly. It doesn't change the time that a drone is launched or the parameters it's able to be launched under.
Thank you. And then one final question, I know my colleagues are indulging me. So I appreciate Assistant Sheriff, are you saying that there was a breakdown in communication or coordination with the City of West Hollywood? Was there a breakdown in coordination with the department and the civilian oversight commission? Because they heard the presentation back in 2023, or a while ago. And then, as far as I understand, as far as, from what I was briefed, everything was approved on that end and kind of pushed forward. So I'm just trying to get a better understanding, kind of what happened, you know, behind the scenes, if...
I'm sorry. You're right in that this was, in my opinion, a colossal miscommunication on all fronts. It sounds like this was a new technology that all of us were embracing and had ideas and concepts about, however, they really didn't align as they should have. And that's where we find ourselves. And I can tell you that this is a priority for the sheriff and for this department. His priority is to advance this technology, to make it more widely applicable, to broaden the deployment policies and release a lot of restrictions that we're under now with the current policy. And as mentioned, this ad hoc committee has been very active, they've been given a strict deadline of when to report back, so that we can begin the process of evaluating it through our civilian oversight committee, who have vowed to work with us to get this thing launched and to get us in 21st century policing and a more effective policing tool that we believe this is, because again, it saves resources and also saves lives, and I think they understand that, we all understand it now, and there have been different things that we put in place, both internally and externally, to make sure that that communication breakdown does not occur.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Meister.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess my question for you is, how long ago did Malibu and Lost Hills get their drone and go through this process?
Malibu Lost Hills, they completed their six-month program, I believe, one month ago, so it would have been six months prior to that. So about seven months ago, they started the pilot program. A month ago, the COC was advised that they had completed their six-month pilot program process. The City of Cerritos, Altadena, and also our Detective Division were just notified of, the COC was just notified two weeks ago that the pilot programs would be beginning.
But the conversations with Malibu and Lost Hills must have happened earlier than six months ago.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I was with Captain Mulder on that COC meeting on May 18th, 2023, that's where we presented the first time to the COC meeting, so that's when the talk initially had happened. And I think a lot of the confusion was, I was presenting one idea, and Captain Mulder was presenting another idea, and so I think that's where a lot of the confusion came in. But that's when we first discussed it, was in 2023, and then we were able to kind of get going and starting about six or seven months ago.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm not understanding is how that happened so recently, and yet, one year ago, which would have been after your discussions or agreement with Malibu, that there could be such a big misunderstanding, that someone didn't say, hey, that's not our policy. I don't understand that. I mean, we've invested a lot of money into this program already, and a lot of time and our residents and community members have spent a lot of time, you know, we're getting their buy-in, and for this to happen after you, really pretty recently, but before this, had this agreement with Malibu and Lost Hills, I mean, where, what happened? I mean, where was the communication break? I mean, who...
Well, I can tell you that the West Hollywood Command had a different opinion about what a pilot program contained, right? What it involved. From my conversations, it was understood by them that it could push the limits of policy, because, under the guise of being a pilot program, when clearly that was not the case. And that wasn't captured until more recently, when we reviewed it in the 2025 date that we mentioned earlier. So that's, in my opinion, where a lot of the confusion took place, not all of it, but a good part of it, in the West Hollywood command staff thinking that we could develop this program outside of the guidelines or restrictions of the policy. And unfortunately, internally, we didn't capture that, they were stepping outside of the boundaries up until recently.
Can you tell me again what constitutes an emergency for this program?
Sure. I'll defer to Captain Royster for that.
An emergency for deploying a drone?
Yeah.
So for us, we call it a high-risk tactical situation. It could be a variety of things. Lieutenants will ask certain questions. We've had several deployments in the Malibu Lost Hills area where guns have been involved, deputies have had to approach a location unseen, where someone's shooting out into, I think one was a long driveway that deputies had to approach, and the individual was shooting down the driveway, they were able to launch a drone and get it overhead to identify where the individual was, so deputies can make a safe approach with a piece of armor. Other high-risk tactical situations could be, you know, it varies, it's going to have to be on a case-by-case basis, but we look at the, we look at the risk and safety factor of personnel responding, and then how can they safely approach that, and would a drone be able to aid them in doing that? Now, again, that has to go with a time factor. So under our current policy, there is a spin-up time. It's not like a drone-for-first-responder where you have a program or you have a company that's sitting there ready to push the button. In this instance, this is a drone system that's in the station, it would have to be taken outside, it would have to have the pilot and the observer, it'd have to be launched in the air, they would have to maintain visual observation of the drone at all times. That has to do, has to happen in order to comply with our FAA agreement that we have with them. That's one of the other things that has to be amended in order to do that.
Can't really, any emergency or situation escalate into something of that level? I mean, I think about Pride, and we have, you know, 15,000 people or whatever it is in our park, or we, you know, recently had a rally, of course, it was peaceful, but, you know, you just never, you never know what could happen in a situation. I mean, we have situations where, you know, we have a parade where our community members are actually vulnerable, because they are out there, and there are people that don't... vulnerable because they are out there and there are people that don't, you know, agree with what we think is right here in West Hollywood. And so in any of those situations, something could escalate where a drone would be actually an incredibly helpful tool for us.
I can tell you that we share your feelings on that. I know that the rank and file that are out in the field, they want the drone for first responder program. They're actually really craving for it because it does provide a huge valuable tool for them on the field in dealing with situations and problem solving. When it comes to flying drones over surveillance over large crowds, I agree with you that, you know, any incident can turn into a high-risk situation, any incident can turn into a disaster. But we have to constantly evaluate that line of the community that feels that we're surveilling them or that we're monitoring them when they're trying to express their First Amendment rights and when we're trying to provide that safe and a high-risk tactical situation. So currently, our policy does not allow us just to launch on a crowd or just to launch on, for lack of better terms, a surveillance mission, just to monitor a crowd. There have to be some type of nexus that transitions it's into some type of high-risk tactical or disaster along those lines.
So last question. So the cities of Beverly Hills and Santa Monica use drones. I know that they have their own police departments, but are there, are you familiar enough with them to say what their policy is?
I know that their policy aligns with a true drone for first responders. So they're going through the process that we, they've gone through the process that we are now, where we've gone down and said, you know, we're going to launch for this, we're going to launch for this, this isn't okay, this is okay, this is okay. And that's what the ad hoc committee is doing right now. It's going to be a lot more broader launch capabilities than what we are currently at. And mind you, when this policy was written and agreed upon with the civilian oversight, and even in our communications with civilian oversight, you know, we've had frank discussions, and they agree with us that, you know, when this policy was written, this was geared towards a tactical deployment when the community was not comfortable with seeing U A Ss flying over their head. You know, it was a bad omen. And so that's why some of the wording is, and I actually had a conversation with their tech ad hoc committee, where, you know, it's almost, roles are reversed now, right? Now everybody expects it to be recording automatically, whereas back then, when that policy was written, they didn't want anybody to record anything whatsoever. And so now, as long as we have the transparency, they want it to be recording because they understand that they can go back and look at that along those lines. So to answer your question, Beverly Hills, yes, they're doing a true D F R program where they're able to launch it. So is Alhambra, so is Chula Vista, a lot of these agencies that we're actually visiting on this group to figure out what's working for them and what's not working for them.
So, yeah, so I was just going to say, instead of reinventing the wheel, maybe you can talk directly to those cities and actually look at what they've come up with so that this won't take very long for you to do. How long do you anticipate it will take for you to make this policy?
So we were told to come back to have a policy ready to go, a proposal to the top eight of our department that they could review. We were supposed to have that done, I think it was like this week or next week, but due to our recent last two weeks that had been, that set us back a bit, and some of our trips to Alhambra did get canceled. So we're rescheduling those now. Again, to your point, we want to make sure we do this one time. We take their best practices and we learn the lessons that they had to learn. And I've already been to Chula Vista and I've learned a lot from them. So I am confident to say, within the next month, we'll at least have something to go before the top eight.
Yeah. And if I could just expand on that a little bit, we want to get this right. And with that requires conversations with a lot of law enforcement agencies. But just we have to keep in mind that we are a unique organization with 23 patrol stations, each wanting a drone program. So our goal is to get it right the first time, have a policy that's consistent across all of our stations. So that's why we are really evaluating what's working, what's not, taking the good, the bad from every agency that we speak with to get it right, because we have to. And this is the direction the sheriff wants to take our department. And you're right in that every situation could evolve into a tactical or high-profile situation. But with oversight, we found that we really have to be specific in terms of what constitutes a deployment. So that's why the policy is written the way it is. It doesn't, you know, specify what a emergency is. It's a little broad, but we have to, you know, work within a framework of what it looks like and be more specific as opposed to just discriminately deploying a drone in every situation that could potentially turn into something more tragic.
And sir, if I may add to touch on his comments, we also have to write a drone policy or U A S policy that's applicable here in the City of West Hollywood, that's applicable in Palmdale, Lancaster, and extreme rural areas, that's applicable in South LA, where you deal with L A X airline traffic. And so there's a lot of restrictions that we have to make sure that whatever we come up with has to be able to be used in any of our stations.
And our new drone policy, when it does come out, that means we also have to get a new COA. And so that is something that's going to take a little bit of time, but that is something that Captain Royster and his team is working on.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. I have some questions for Danny. When we developed our own city policy, we went through a number of community processes. And as I recall, we made changes to the draft based on input from the Sheriff's Department. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it wasn't just input from the station, it was input from higher-ups at the Sheriff's Department, correct?
That is my understanding, Vice Mayor.
And based on the policy that we adopted and the support we believed we had from the Sheriff's Department, based on the policies that we developed, we agreed to provide funding for a watch center at the Sheriff's Department, correct?
That is correct.
Has that been completed?
Yes, it has.
Okay. And then have we purchased drones based on the policy that we have?
So our agreement with the drone contractor is to lease the drones.
Okay. So, but we already identified a contractor, and I think we authorized you to enter into leases?
Correct.
Okay. So throughout this entire process, with us making physical improvements to the Sheriff's Department, with us supplying them with our draft policy, no one at the Sheriff's Department said, oh, wait a minute, you're not in compliance with our policy?
Yeah, until recently, no, no one had brought that to our attention until April or early May this year.
I think, obviously, I accept your apology for that communication lapse, but it's very disappointing, right? And you came here and said the partnership is so important, which I think it is as well. But you can see how that doesn't feel right. I mean, it just doesn't feel right when we've invested time, money, and effort into a program where we're trying to enhance your efforts in protecting our community, and then sort of at the last minute, oh, wait a minute, there are differences with our policy after we already had it reviewed by your department. So, and when I look at the distinctions between your policy and ours, I don't know how anyone could miss them. So as I look at them, your policy, only emergencies. Our policy, first responders. So it doesn't necessarily have to meet the definition of emergency. Your policy, no recording. Our policy, record. That seems like a very obvious distinction. Your policy requires 15 minutes before it's deployed. Our policy, somebody at the Sheriff's Department can immediately deploy. Your policy, there has to be visual observation, somebody out in the field to launch the drone, but ours would allow it for a launch from the station. Are those the major distinctions that I'm seeing based on the existing policy and what we adopted?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. And again, I'm just baffled by how no one at the department could recognize the distinctions between our policy and your existing policy. I appreciate that you're trying to change it and make it a policy that is a county-wide policy. And your timeframe seems like it was supposed to be done this week, and I get the reasons for the delay. How long do you think it will take to go through the civilian oversight committee? And how long do we expect the F A A changes to take if they were to approve a change policy?
I know on the F A A changes, it's already in the works. They anticipate a couple of months to have the, it's not an unusual request to ask to remove the visual observer.
Okay. And the policy, once it goes to the C O C?
Yeah, as far as that process, I don't have a date on that. They can take as long as they want, well, within a reasonable period to get back to us with input. However, the Chair of the Commission has vowed to work with us on this, seeing that, you know, there is room for improvement. We've shown our efforts to improve our own internal communication as well as external communication processes. So I wish I had a deadline on it, but I don't at this point. But I can tell you again, it is a priority for the department as well as the sheriff, who has expressed that to the Commission members.
So my, thank you. And my last question is for Danny, or maybe for our city manager. It appears that Beverly Hills has a program that is being operated consistent with the policy that we adopted. Can we contract with Beverly Hills to operate this program?
I'll respond. And David, if you want to add anything to it. So we have not had, of course, that conversation, but the same contractor that we entered into an agreement with is the exact same contractor that Beverly Hills currently utilizes. City Manager Wilson, I don't know if you have anything to add.
We can certainly have additional conversations. I think there will be complications in having them perform law enforcement services here, when we already contract with the sheriffs for those services. But we can certainly have those conversations. There is also some concern about the distance that the drones can fly. They'd have to fly from a different location closer to the city to cover the entire range of West Hollywood as well. But that's certainly a conversation we can have.
I mean, we built out the center at the station. I don't see why we couldn't use that. I'll let you have that conversation. Obviously, that's not ideal, but I want to get this program up and running. And are we able to launch the program without recording under the current sheriff's policy?
Yes, yes. And that's what, that's the kind of the olive branch that I wanted to give, that Danny and I spoke about, is we already have a drone ready to give West Hollywood at no cost. And the transparency tool, until your program's up and running, that the air data will be paid for. And that way, you can deploy your drone, how Cerritos deploys their drone, how Malibu Lost Hills deploy their drone, so we can get you guys up and running. That's really what we want to do as we're working to change policy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Erickson?
Thank you so much. And first, thank you very much to our Sheriff's Department and Commander. I was actually just meant of talking about you this morning with Steve from P O P A. And so you're very well respected, and I want to appreciate and also thank your forward-thinking nature with the drone program. I understand you really set off on your own to really look at how we can enhance law enforcement in these new ways with technology. And I think it takes a lot of, a lot of great compassion and care to really look at how you can help your community. So I just wanted to give you your flowers there because I really deeply respect the work that you've done. Just a couple of questions for our city manager. How much money have we spent so far? Or specifically, my understanding, based on our conversation, is that we haven't spent the money, it's just been allocated. Where am I missing the point?
Yes. So as Danny mentioned earlier, for the drone services themselves, that would be a lease. So we haven't spent money on that. We have spent money on building out the real-time watch center. However, that was not intended only for the drones, it's also for the stationary cameras. So we would need those anyway, as we continue forward with some of our other innovative technology projects. So there hasn't been much direct money spent out, and we've been in conversations with the contractor, that they're aware that we may not move forward and have not asked that we dedicate any money to those services unless the program moves forward.
Great. So we've really spent a minimal amount of money based on this one program, but additional monies for the real-time watch centers. That's really good to know, and the cameras that we've been looking at. In terms of the civilian oversight commission, when did the Chair bring up their concerns on this specific policy item? Because my understanding was very, very recently that this item became a moment of concern.
From, when you say the Chair?
I believe the Chair of the C O C and a few of them made comments very-
May of this year.
May of this year. So I think, you know, and I think we get to say this, and maybe you all don't because you're very good at your jobs, is that this item became very well aware from the C O C's presidency's standpoint very recently. Whereas I understand the discrepancies in the policy that Vice Mayor Heilman talked about, and we should have always addressed that. This is a brand-new item that I think has seen the light, maybe for other reasons, that we won't really mention here. So I think that's a little disconcerting in the direct honesty with the Commission that we like to have with the C O C. So I even personally think that if we're going to have the rug pulled out under the Contract Cities, who have been actively working to enhance these technological services in our communities, to have a last-minute change from the President, who I have great respect for, and he's a personal friend, is actually very disrespectful to the Contract Cities themselves. That's my personal opinion. And so I would really like the city staff to really engage with a conversation and in a conversation with that civilian oversight Commission President, because they actually need to understand the dollar amount that local cities, a lot of us, are spending to enhance our technological services. And to, in May, have that happen at the last second, I think is very disingenuous when we've had two-plus years of this conversation going on. So I would like to give direction for staff to not only go back with whatever we're going to figure out here, but my recommendation is for us to actually engage the Chair, and I'm happy as the Vice President of Contract Cities to also engage in this way, because a lot of Contract Cities are actually very upset that this is actually not occurring as a result of where we originally intended to do it. So I think we actually need to sit down with that individual or whoever is their appropriate representative and let them know the actual cost that cities are engaging in. And then I'll just leave it with this. Specifically, you know, a lot of our residents, you know, always say to us, you know, we would like to have more deputies on the streets, we would like to have more for eyes on the streets. And so we try to find ways to enhance that, right? From a real-time watch center to cameras, to a drone, to other aspects. And whereas I know the Sheriff's Department is struggling in terms of, you're not, you have a recruitment classes in process, right? But there is a process for how long that takes, right? So we can't just automatically say, you're right, everyone, we want to have five more deputies on the streets. But that's not how it works, right? And so these are tools and solutions that actually do enhance an unarmed type of response that, you know, can utilize technology in a safe way. And I don't know if that message is actually getting back to the civilian oversight commission, who might not want the reverse. So I do think it behooves the Contract Cities, and I'll be bringing this up at our next executive board meeting, to be requesting a meeting. But I think, because I know that individual is a friend to our community, it would be helpful for us to actually sit down with him to discuss it. Because even though we've spent some dollars on it, I don't know if people understand the dollars that cities may or may not have at this moment. And additionally, whereas West Hollywood does have money, luckily, which is great, a lot of cities don't. And $50,000 to $70,000 to $100,000 is a worker who's helping with social service programs or meals and social service programs in general. So I appreciate the diligence. I appreciate the, what is it, opportunity to come back and talk to us about this. But I actually think the C O C needs to be listening to local cities, and I see that as the actual disconnect that's not occurring at the moment. And we should probably do better at that.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for this update. It's really appreciated. I know we've been spending the better half of this year educating and reminding the public that this program's coming up. public that this program's coming online. So I think this is a big moment of sort of frustration for not just this council, but the public too, who anticipated this. But I think the moment it arrives in is also important to note. And it was mentioned that there are sort of, you know, outstanding concerns that people have about the nature of surveillance. You know, just tonight, our City Manager reminded the public again that there isn't coordination between the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and Department of Homeland Security, Immigration and Customs Enforcement. But I do think those factors are on the public's mind. And there was an offer tonight about bringing on technology that hasn't been part of the public conversation for this community for the last year. And I wanted to ask specifically if, in events of fire, search and rescue, emergency scenarios, the Sheriff's Department would already have deployed... Chosen to deploy that tool in the City of West Hollywood under those circumstances, given that it's a policy the department already has and tools they already use? Or if we're in a scenario where we wouldn't use that technology, no matter the need for that case, regardless of that policy existing?
Yes. So currently, so West Hollywood right now could operate under the current policy, but what I found, being the captain of Malibu Lost Hills, is I would have to call SEB and say, hey, I want a drone. They are all housed in Eastern, in East LA. So they would have to go in and then drive all the way to Malibu Lost Hills. When I have an injured hiker and it's 110 degrees, you know, time is not on my side. And so that is really the momentum to really push to have the drones at the station ready to go. And so that is... So right now, if there's anything that happens, yes, you can... If it falls within our policy, you could call... The station could call SEB, and they can go to Eastern, pick up the drone, and come out here. But that's where we want to move that... Remove that part and at least have a drone here, deputies that are... That know how to fly, that are FAA certified, trained by SEB, that can fly like that after they get the approval from SEB.
Thank you. And I think the piece of technology is one thing, the proximity is another, but it's the policy that we also spent so much time educating the public about specifically. So I know we're moving... We've done a lot of questions and discussion, and we're sort of moving into the conversation itself tonight. And the recommendation before us is really about receiving an update and then postponing the implementation until the policy that we had mulled over, communicated to the public over the better course of the last year, communicated through mailers, letters, to multiple town halls in person and online, that that would be the policy that this community could expect. So I will just sort of start the discussion part of this and say, I don't feel comfortable bringing a tool to the public attached to a policy that isn't the policy discussion that we've had. I think there's a world that, given the timeline that's being insisted, that we could have a different discussion and we could go back to community. But I think that at the point in time that we're at, it doesn't seem appropriate to just sort of switch out the piece of tool and therefore the policy that it's attached to. The recording was a really important aspect of what the community that I have been hearing from was happy to see. And while I know that the outdated policy is what we're stuck with with the Sheriff's Department at this time being, and you're working really hard to update that, that is where I'm sitting with now. And I see that Councilmember Heng jumped back in and Councilmember Meister, so we'll do another round of go-arounds.
I understand your concerns, Mayor, but I think that it would make sense for us to have that drone here, because it's only going to be deployed in, you know, really high-risk situations. And so what I might suggest is that it goes to Public Safety Commission. An item goes to Public Safety Commission, and then maybe back to us about using this temporarily while we're waiting for them to change the policy. Because there can always possibly be a really bad emergency where it would be useful to have it here and not at the EOC on Eastern. So I don't see the harm in having it here. And I agree, if we want to let the public know about it and get some input, then let's, you know, ask for it to be expedited in terms of going to Public Safety Commission and coming back here.
Councilmember Heng.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm of a sentiment that the Department has pretty much indicated or admitted of the... They admitted the ill coordination that went on for the past two years, since 2023 and up to now. And if they're willing to give... Gift the City a drone, then I think I agree with Councilmember Meister that we should implement it until a new policy is ready for wider adoption by not only West Hollywood, but also the entire, you know, every city in Contract Cities. And yes, we did invest minimal amount, but I'd like to remind the community that the City invested a large amount in the physical and mental wellness of our deputy sheriffs in investing in the gym at the station. So as a city, we do care about our deputies in doing that. And I just... I'd like to echo what my other two colleagues said, and, you know, what happened, what I feel just wasn't right. And I feel bamboozled, to be honest with you. And so do our constituents, who were expecting that program to be running. But I do appreciate the gift of the drone. And I'm in agreement with my colleague, Councilmember Meister, in terms of having it run through Public Safety Commission on an expedited process and for us to use what technologies that we are allowed to use in the interim until a new policy is drafted and widely adopted and hopefully approved. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Heilman.
I agree with my colleagues. I think we should go forward with the Sheriff's existing policy. And the whole idea of having this program was to provide additional safety for the public and additional security. It was responding to concerns about crime in the community. And, you know, ideally, we'll be able to, and the sheriffs will be able to craft a policy that's consistent with ours. But in the interim, I think we should go forward and at least allow the drones to be used in response to emergencies. The one area I might disagree with my colleagues on, I think this should just be an information item to the Public Safety Commission. This is our call. We vetted the policy. Unfortunately, we can't go forward with the policy that we adopted, but I believe that eventually we will be in compliance with the policy that we adopted. And this is hopefully a short period of time. I'm hoping with Councilmember Erickson's lobbying of the COC and with the diligence that the sheriffs have promised, that we will be able to get this resolved within the next six months.
Councilmember Erickson.
I concur with Vice Mayor Heilman. I think this should be a point of information to the Public Safety Commission and for it to come back. I think we've discussed this for a number of years already, and I think the Public Safety Commission has done as well. I see a few of them actually in the room today. And I think that it's a way for us to get it back as soon as possible, for us to adopt and move forward as we wait. And I also do understand, and I want to just echo, I do hear what the mayor is saying as well, in terms of their... Of your comments, in terms of the different policies and waiting. And so I do want to respect that. I don't know if there's an easy answer with doing one thing or not, but I do just want to concur that I do want to... I do understand what you're saying and where you're coming from as well.
Thank you. We have spent two meetings with two study sessions, and while we didn't have the first meeting in June, this is the second agenda that has only read postpone the item. So if the public is going to get a public safety update, there's information only after having received mailers about a specific policy, I would ask that we think about some way to communicate broadly to the public that we are making effectively a change in what technology they are going to have in the community. That includes knowing what provider this drone came from. I know that was an important detail that was asked repeatedly in the town halls. And while these may seem like small details, to many, they are the exact thing that brings comfort and understanding and security about the city that they live in. So while it seems that we have enough support to move this item forward to tonight, I don't want to let go of the context that this moment is living in and the fear that many people are in. Whether it is understood or not, it is real, and that this is part of what enables some of that fear for some in our community. So I'm deeply sensitive to that, while I am very much appreciative of the tension and the trouble that our first responders are constantly living in and the ways that this technology improves response. It is about the communication and the understanding and the buy-in from the public, which, for over a year, we worked very hard to get. And we are effectively changing that policy in the middle of a meeting without very much notice on an agenda. Thank you all.
Madam Mayor, may I for one second?
Sure.
Thank you. I do concur with what you're saying about how we could notice to the public. If I know... I do understand that there is a motion and a second on the table. Perhaps we could give a general direction, if the motion-makers would be willing to do that, to give our great comms team or whomever that availability to make sure the public is being notified in this way as well for this change. I think that is an important topic.
Yeah, as well as an information item at the Public Safety Commission.
And I just wanted to clarify, we're not actually changing our policy. We're allowing drones to be operated temporarily at the sheriff's station, consistent with the Sheriff's Department's policy, but our policy is not being changed.
No, but the policy that will be enacted is a policy that wasn't educated to the public or shared with the public until this very moment.
Agreed. And I agree with your concerns, but I just want to make sure that we are not giving direction to change our policy.
Understood.
We're authorizing the use of drones not consistent with our policy for a temporary period of time until the sheriff adopts a new policy that we hope will be consistent with our policy.
Understood. Thank you for the clarity as well.
Thank... Councilmember Heng, can you state the motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the item as stated by the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Erickson.
I think it's to move forward with implementation of the drone program, consistent with the sheriff's policy, while the sheriff is reviewing their policy and hopefully aligning it with ours.
And also to give direction to communications, to communicate what we're doing and for...
And then FYI, our consent item to the Public Safety Commission.
And an information item, right, for the Public Safety Commission.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. With that, we will start voting. And the motion passes 4-1, noting the no vote of Mayor Byers.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate you coming out tonight, especially given everything that's going on. We really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll move to our public hearings.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's right.
Yeah, so I apologize. I failed to read the title of the ordinance for item B8 into the record, and it was approved on consent. So for B8, we are reintroducing on first reading ordinance number 25-10, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood, California, adopting an amendment to Title 19 zoning ordinance of the West Hollywood Municipal Code to require a neighborhood meeting for projects seeking development agreements, and finding such action does not qualify as a project subject to the California Environmental Quality Act and is otherwise exempt under State SEQA Guidelines, Section 15601B3. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll go to the public hearings. Item C1, Zone Text Amendment to Designate Electric Vehicle Charging Sites and Electric Vehicle Service Stations as a Primary Use in Designated Commercial Zones. We'll now hear this item. The public hearing is open. Are there any disclosures from councilmembers?
Nope.
Terrific. City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Amazing. I see you're all seated. Will you present the staff report as you're ready?
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor.
Do we need a staff report? Are there any speakers on this item?
We don't have any speakers.
Give us an FYI about what we're doing tonight, and maybe we can skip the report then.
All right. I will introduce Francisco Contreras and Jordan Parish, and they will give you a very brief overview of what this item is. Thank you.
Thank you. Some public education's helpful.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Tonight, I will be presenting a proposed Zone Text Amendment to Support the States and West Hollywood's Climate and Mobility Goals by Designating EV Charging Stations and EV Service Stations as Primary Uses in Designated Commercial Zones.
Thank you.
I think that...
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for my colleagues? We have no public comment on tonight's item, and we have a motion and a second.
I have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead, Councilmember Meister.
How do we... How do we justify limiting this if we have to? Do you know what I mean? Because, you know, in the past, we've had to limit the number of bike... Number of banks on Sunset. How do we limit, like, a part... Basically, this is saying that we can have a parking lot of EV chargers, right? I mean, that's the idea, that it's a primary use. That's what the... That's what the purpose of the project is, right? So how do we make sure that all of a sudden we don't end up with a bunch of parking lots with EVs? I mean, besides the fact that we're a built-out city, but you understand what I'm saying. If this all of a sudden became a thing, you know, became so successful and people were making so much money off EV charging, I don't know.
Yeah. I understand. Yeah. In fact, the state mandates that the city allow these by right. And they have permitted that the city actually specify a zone, at least one zone, where they can be permitted by right. And if we don't do that, they can be permitted in all zones by right. So what we are doing is actually limiting it to just one zone in the city. And we've kind of also reviewed where it can be less impactful to our housing development potential and chose the CN zone for that particular reason. The, you know, the economics of whether or not it might, you know, take over the CN zone, it's... We don't see that as, you know, as an option. We do allow accessory charging stations now, just accessory to primary business. We see that happening more than a standalone EV charging site.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we start voting, because there is a motion on the floor to introduce on first reading an ordinance, I'm going to read the title into the record. An Ordinance Adopting an Amendment to Title 19, the Zoning Ordinance of the West Hollywood Municipal Code, to Designate Electric Vehicle EV Charging Sites and Electric Vehicle EV Service Stations as a Primary Use in Designated Commercial Zones and Finding the Action Exempt from SEQA. And with that, we will start...
Melissa, you forgot the most important part of the motion.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you so much. And my motion also includes closing the public hearing.
So you made the... It moved off... Who was the second or...
It was Vice Mayor Heilman.
Okay, great. Let me...
Whoa.
All righty, let's start voting. And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thank you, staff, for the presentation. Very short.
Mayor, can I suggest that maybe we could combine items C2, C3, and C4?
Mm-mm. We're going to take them all individually, but we'll go really quick.
Okay. There are no speakers on any of them.
There are no speakers on any of them. Okay, so we're now going to hear a public hearing, item C2, Placement of Delinquent Solid Waste Fees on the Property Tax Bill of Property Honors. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures? City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Maybe like one sentence from staff on what we're doing here tonight.
Good evening. My name is John Gilmore, and I am the Engineering Division Manager. The City has a contract with Athens to provide solid waste recycling and organics collection services to the public. Residential properties with one to four units pay their trash bill directly by assessments on their annual property tax bill. Residential properties with five or more pay their trash bill directly to Athens in the form of a bill. The City created a condition in the contract that prohibits Athens from stopping trash collection to multifamily residential properties when those properties don't pay their trash bill. This is to prevent the tenants from suffering consequences due to the owner or the property manager's failure to pay. To resolve the situation, the City puts the delinquencies on the annual property tax bill to ensure that it gets paid to Athens. This is the public hearing, wherein council will approve placement of the delinquent charges onto the property tax bill. In April, there were 159 delinquent account holders. Athens and City staff communicated to these account holders over the last several months. And as indicated in the... and as indicated in the memo distributed this morning, the final count of delinquent accounts is 23. This concludes the presentation.
Thank you. I see Vice Mayor Heilman had a comment.
I noticed that some of the delinquent accounts were actually senior buildings owned by the county, and they're probably exempt from property tax. I'm wondering, have they paid and have we called our good supervisor to maybe enlist her help to get the county to pay their trash bill?
We will talk to Athens. They have a great license there, who, they reach out and try to get these resolved. So we'll write that down and talk to them to see about those specific ones you're referring to.
And I'm thinking, given our relationship with the supervisor, maybe just having somebody in her office nudge the appropriate person in the county to get that resolved, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, we can now close the public testimony of the hearing and vote.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We'll go straight into item C3, Collection of Solid Waste Recycling and Organic Waste Charges on the Tax Roll for Fiscal Year 2025-26. The public hearing is now open. Any disclosures? Great. City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Amazing. Shorter sentence this time.
Good evening. My name is John Gilmore, Engineering Division Manager. City has a contract with Athens to provide solid waste recycling and organic collection services to the public. Per the contract, Athens rates are charged to the public increase each year based on CPI. Also, per the contract, Athens in 2022 had to embark upon a big overhaul to comply with the new state law regarding organics recycling implementation. So per the contract, the rates also increase each year to cover that overhaul. Lastly, the city's costs for operating the program also increase each year based on CPI. This is the public hearing. We're in council will approve the increase in rates and placement on the property tax bill accordingly. This concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Terrific. Seeing no comments or questions from my colleagues, I'll close the public testimony portion. Oh, Vice Mayor?
I was just going to ask a status on the implementation of the food waste program. I'm in a multi-unit building, and we all got the individual bins for our unit, but there is no place in the building to dispose of them. So how is Athens doing on implementation?
It's going well. Yeah, we've been doing that now for a bit, and whenever there are certain properties, individual properties, that have challenges, Athens has a team ready to go out and meet at the site and talk with the ownership of that lot and try to resolve a situation about, you know, usually some common complaints are, well, it's an old site, and we don't have room for an organics bin on the property. So there is a process where that discussion happens, and we try to, you know, find ways to encourage that green bin. There are some properties where there is a waiver process where there's just nowhere to put it. It's zero lot line, right? So we're happy to always, and Athens is ready to meet onsite at any time with parcel owners to try to encourage that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from my colleagues? Okay, I will now close the public testimony portion. Great, thank you so much.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Flying through these public hearings, we'll go to C4, Collection of Sewer Charges on the Tax Roll for Fiscal Year 2025-26. The public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures? Great. City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Back to you.
Good evening. Name is John Gilmore, Engineering Division Manager. The city owns, operates, and maintains a sewer system to serve the public. The cost of the system is paid for by collecting a fee from every property on their annual property tax bill. Every year, the fee is adjusted for inflation to keep up with rising costs. This year's CPI increase is 3.063%. This is the hearing. We're in council will approve the increase in rates and placement on the property tax bill accordingly. This concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. No comments, questions on this one? Okay, I'll close the public testimony portion, and we'll vote.
And close the public hearing.
And close the public hearing.
And the motion passes 5-0.
All right, two more. C5, The Public Hearing and First Reading of Ordinance Number 25, Modifying the Basis and Method of Levying Assessments Within the Sunset Strip Business Improvement District by Establishing a Procedure of Waiver and Penalties on Delinquent and Assessment and Codifying the Sunset Strip Business Improvement District Regulations into the West Hollywood Municipal Code. Public hearing is now open. Are there any disclosures? Nope. City Clerk, how was it noticed?
As required by law.
Thank you. I think we are already getting a motion on the table, but if you want to just quickly say anything about this item? All set? Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Any comments from my colleagues? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing now.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. And public hearing, C6, is now open. I'll say it just so the public understands. We're modifying the basis and method of levying assessments within the West Hollywood Design District by establishing a procedure for waiver of penalties and interest on delinquent assessments and updates to the Municipal Code. Public hearing is now open. Any disclosures? Nope. City Clerk, how was this hearing noticed?
As required by law.
Excellent. Are there, anything from our staff representatives?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, then we will go ahead and close this public hearing. And that is the fastest six public hearings.
And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Thanks to everyone for racing through that. Have fun. We're moving to our legislative items. Item D1, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of West Hollywood, authorizing temporary parking requirements for employee and residential use in preferential parking districts 8 and 10. I see our wonderful staff coming to the table. I believe there's some interest in moving this to consent, but some specific questions or comments held back, so I don't know if we need a full staff report or if you want to just go into those questions, Vice Mayor?
I can just go to my questions.
Terrific.
I guess my questions have to do with the fact that, number one, normally, our permit process is by petition, and in this instance, we're waiving the petition, correct? And then we did some kind of online survey, which I don't think is statistically valid, but in portions of the district, there was opposition, not support. So why are we doing this?
The, the street, or the portions of Gardner that, excuse me, that were recommending to have the pilot program on were supportive of the pilot. The other, on Vista and 900 block of Gardner, they were not.
But why are we waiving the petition requirement that we normally impose for everyone else who wants restricted parking on their street?
Because we've gotten feedback about how challenging it can be to implement permit restrictions, and we thought this was a unique area because it was a large contiguous space, section of streets that would allow us to do this to try to see if we could get more participation from the residents if they had a pilot program and they could get a sense of what it would be like to have permits on the street.
It just seems so contrary to what we've done everywhere else, where, you know, restricting parking on somebody's street is a significant change, and implementing it without knowing that there is support in the neighborhood is problematic to me. And I understand the difficulty of gathering signatures, et cetera, but I think we are running the risk of imposing parking restrictions on people who don't want them. And we've tried to avoid that. And with, with the, you know, the survey being, in my mind, worthless, I apologize, I'm not faulting you, but it just, it's not statistically valid, it's, there's just not enough response, and without a petition, how do we know the neighborhood really wants this as opposed to some very active members really wanting it and everyone else being either ambivalent or opposed? That's, that's my concern.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Erickson put his hand up.
Yes, thank you. I can, as someone who lives over there and someone who was a part of this conversation at the beginning, I can tell you that this proposed item was definitely supported by a lot of members of the community, specifically wanting to try this out as a pilot program. I believe the city held two online Zoom meetings with different participation as well, that I realize many members of the community engaged in. This also came up during the Gardner Streetscape planning conversation as well, for what that would look like in terms of parking in regards to individuals fearing that they would lose their parking, so if they already had existing parking there, that this would be a way in which they would keep that to avoid any loss of the parking issue. And so this was almost a middle ground for the community to come together and understand it, which is why it would be a temporary parking requirement for them to see what it would actually be like as the progress for the Gardner Streetscape Improvement Plan moves forward.
How many dwelling units on the street, the streets where we're imposing the restrictions?
On the 1100 and 1200 block of Gardner, there's 107. On the 1,000 block of Gardner, there's 133.
And when we did the online survey, how many people voted in support?
For the 1100 and 1200 block of Gardner, there were seven responses. For the 1,000 block of Gardner, there were 14.
So out of more than 200 dwelling units, we have maybe 21 responses, and they weren't all positive, right?
That is correct. But we did, we also had the Zoom meeting where we gave, where we had people, and the, we gave a presentation and they gave feedback, and those blocks were supportive at that meeting as well.
How many people at the Zoom meeting?
Around a dozen for each meeting.
And we don't know whether they might be the same people who voted online?
No, we don't.
Okay.
And may I ask, how many parking spots are on those two blocks to begin with?
I do not know.
Is it at least 214 or 266?
I, I really can't say. I'm sorry. I can find out and let you know, but I don't know off the top of my head.
And it's like super, it is also difficult because that street, there's like people that have invented parking spots along Gardner, so it may seem like it's a parking spot for a unit or a building that's there, and the exact number, we can find out for sure. But as someone who has knocked every single door on that street, I can tell you that when I spoke about this compromise last year, I knew that people were very supportive of trying to test it out to see if this would be something that would work in regards to what the improvement plans were going on on Gardner.
And in, in response to the improvement plans, what is the timeline for some of those other improvement plans that were part of what was, you know, putting the community into a position to believe that they wouldn't have the parking that they have grown so used to having?
You mean the changes to Gardner? I honestly don't know.
Oh, Helen, that mic, sorry.
Sorry. Can you hear me?
No. Well, yes and no.
Yes and no? Oh, better.
There you are.
I have to turn it on first. We don't have the timelines yet for those improvements. It would be the Gardner, the will be Gardner and Vista, that, that area. But also to your point about the survey, we realized the survey data is not really that valid. We were relying more on what the information we had received in the meetings, as well as we had taken it to the Transportation Commission as well, Transportation Mobility Commission as well, and people spoke out in favor at that time. This is not the traditional way that we do this, but we're trying this pilot program as Vincent mentioned, that it's a larger section. Usually, we go block, a block, use a block section. In this area, it's a much larger section. That's why we're trying this pilot program. Of course, if this is not something that the council's interested in, we understand we were just trying to do something new to try to, try to see if that area is amenable to something of this nature.
I might suggest that in the future, if, if this is something that the department is going to do, that maybe instead of relying on Zoom meeting and feedback and feedback at online survey, that we send a postcard to every dwelling unit in the area with a deadline of, do you support this? Return, you know, with, with it already stamped. So we have a, I think that might give us a little better data in, in going forward.
No, no, that's, that's a great idea. We did do some mailing to let them know about the Transportation Commission meeting as well as this meeting this evening for those areas, but that's also a great idea as well.
Did anyone go to the transportation?
Yes, we, I think we had three speakers at the transportation. I know that's not in relationship to the amount of units, but it is members of the community coming out and speaking in favor.
Councilmember Meister had her hand.
Yep. Thank you. I, I find that our system for signing, you know, getting a petition for, for preferential parking, especially in an area where it's all apartment buildings, is very, very difficult. We've talked about this in previous councils, how, how the onus is on the residents to get those signatures, and that's not always an easy thing for, for them to do. So I'm not necessarily opposed to this, and especially because it's a pilot, but what I would suggest is that maybe at a three-month interval and a six-month interval, that staff figures out a way of actually, even if it's going door-to-door, if it's 133 people, that is not a lot of, really, it's not a lot of time to have someone go door-to-door to see how things are going and to, you know, get, get feedback as we go. So if that's possible.
That's definitely something that we could, we would be open to doing this.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question for clarity. I'm sorry, Councilmember Erickson, you wanted to chime in? Okay. We got a public comment that was saying, and it may just be confusion, but I think it'll be helpful clarity, that residents on Carson would be impacted because there are three parking meters that would be included in this zone. Did you see that public comment? Could you just speak to that or clarify?
Yes, so the, what we're suggesting is that we allow both residential parkers, sorry, residential parkers as well as employees of local businesses to park at those spaces, so they both can park at the space. And also, we put a list of, of spaces, meter spaces that were around there, but as council, if you want us to, to limit those in any way, we can, you know, we'll go with whatever the recommendation is.
So there's parking meters on Carson that the residents of Gardner would be entitled to differently than the residents on Carson? That's what the public comment was saying?
It, it's a 10R. So the, the business would be able to park there, and then somebody that had a 10R permit could park there as well.
Okay. So both the business and the residents would be able to park at that location. And those meters on Carson, I believe they stop at 6:00 PM. We no longer charge after 6:00 PM. And then the, some of the other meters that start at 8:00 PM. So they're not long, we're no longer charging at those, so there's no longer a violation. So the, the permit would allow them to park at that time. Go ahead.
And actually, the, putting that restriction on those meters would allow residents to park there. So, so somebody just wanting to park on the street would not be able to park there. So yeah, there might be an employee using the space, but there won't be somebody just coming to the area and parking, being able to take it.
Okay. I think what the, what the email said that was, that this was a person who lived on Carson.
Correct.
So Carson, so they're not gonna, do they already have their own permits or they have no permits? They don't have permit restricted parking on Carson, right?
They do not have permit restrictions.
So then they wouldn't be able to just park at the meter after 6:00 because they would have to have a District 8 or District 10 permit, which they wouldn't have because they're on Carson, and they're not on Gardner or Vista, but the parking space is on Carson. So the complaint was that they're losing spaces because of So the complaint was that they're losing spaces because of this pilot. And so I think we need to rethink that, that meter situation.
Yeah, I think, like I mentioned, if you all want to remove some of the meters, we can easily do that.
Yeah, I think the meters, especially on Carson, should be open to people who live on Carson. And if they don't have permits to use it, then they wouldn't have been able to use it. So I would remove the permit issue on Carson meters.
Thank you for catching that and clarifying with me. Councilmember Erickson, did you have a comment? You have a yawn.
No, I'm not going to add any more to it. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
I also wanted to mention, the conversation that this is beginning is really about the petitioning process being too burdensome for community members. Otherwise, what has been a very engaged community around, you know, we've heard from a lot of folks on Gardner about the parking issues related to changes on Fountain, related to the Gardner Vista Willoughby Bike Plan. All of these things are many years down the road still. And we're really preempting those concerns from an engaged community that could have gone about this process. And while I do understand it's burdensome, we've looked in the eyes of community members who have reminded us about these burdensome processes when it comes to petitioning for things like speed bumps for safety on their streets that children are on, where cars have flown down. And we haven't made those sort of concessions. But here we are looking at what is ultimately around 480 units of parking, which we don't even have capacity for realistically on this one stretch of road that we're giving to community members as a way to say, we're fixing your problems. And I don't know that this is actually a fix to the problems. I get that it'll sort of soothe the soul in a way of concern that there's a little bit more control over that street. But it doesn't actually, I think, get to the heart of the problem. So I don't know that this is something I can feel supportive of tonight, especially without a larger conversation about the petitioning process itself. And what I'm fearful of more over is that the rest of the community will look to us to use the same process to solve their street-by-street issue. And that's not actually addressing the bigger challenge with the petitioning process or the bigger challenge with the parking ecosystem that we're all sort of living in. So that's my comments tonight. Thank you. Anything else from our colleagues? Councilmember Meister?
Does the pilot have to be a year long? I mean, would six months be enough to be able to determine if this is something that's worthwhile or not?
We could. I think that six, or a year is, it just gives you more information and a better sense of how it's going. If, I do think that, you know, if we get in six months and everybody is clearly communicating that they're not happy with it, we can end it. But I do think that there's value to having it be a full year.
So I guess, I mean, what I'm hearing or seeing is two of my colleagues are gung-ho and two of my colleagues are not so gung-ho. And I, I'm sort of, you know, on the fence. So what I might suggest is that we, we just hold on this and take a little more time to get input from, from the neighborhood, if that's possible, whatever that means. If it means that we go door-to-door or we send out postcards and say, you have, you know, 30 days or 15 days or whatever it is to return this postcard with your opinion, I would be comfortable with that.
Councilmember Erickson?
I just want to remind the council that this was an issue to help prevent the continued fight over the Gardner Streetscape Plan. And individuals here were told this. And so you're either going to start erupting the fight again over the Gardner fight and then deal with the parking issue or not. And by telling the individuals that live on Gardner who may lose parking, well, we don't know how much they would be losing, specifically to your point, Madam Mayor, this was a way in which we could find a happy middle to test this out because we're not even anywhere near the Gardner Streetscape Plan being implemented at all yet, to my knowledge and what Helen is saying. Additionally, when we, when we think about this plan, then, I mean, if the majority of the council wants to stop the progress and stop and have people continue to get angry and then have to have three of us vote to move the Gardner Plan forward and two of us not to, which happened, you know, several years ago, this, I want to remind everyone, was the happy middle to get us there. And so I'm happy to have a six-month evaluation of it to, I think, get us there, to see what happens. Because as we all know, people in the street are very vocal about this issue regardless. But I just want to remind the council that if we want to play with fire on this again, I'm happy to let that go. But additionally, when the Gardner Streetscape Plan was being reserved, I appear and people can go check the record, offered and made a motion that was voted down, previous council, of course, to have people go door-to-door to knock on the doors. And I believe it was voted down and people didn't want it at that time. So I just want to reiterate that where I think Vice Mayor Heilman last meeting said, the art of insanity is, you know, doing things multiple times and expecting different results. This is us actually trying to get a different result that was a happy medium for the community. And I'm just putting that out there. The majority has the majority. But if people want to go forward and not try to find a happy middle, then that is the will of the majority of the council.
The only comment we received was a comment in opposition. So I think it's helpful to sort of figure out what problem this is really trying to solve tonight. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yeah, I was going to suggest that maybe we, because there are concerns about Carson and some of the meters there. So we're going to have to, if we approve this tonight, we are going to have to cut those out, right? I would be more comfortable moving forward if we sent a postcard to all of the affected dwelling units, got more input from the neighbors. And then I think that's going to take us until our first meeting in August. So if we could continue this until August and make a decision then, that will give us some time to address the Carson concerns and also have a greater sense that the community is really behind this. And I, I understand the concerns about the, the Streetscape Plan, but that, as you said, that's a long way off. So no one is going to be affected by the Streetscape Plan right now. And I'm, I have adopted a lot of permit parking districts. I'm fine with doing it, but I want to make sure that we really do have residents who are in favor of it.
Councilmember Hain?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the robust presentation. I think the pilot, it's a common sense response to real concerns from our residents, especially those on Vista and those on Gardner, who've been dealing with overflow parking and late-night congestion for far too long. And I just want to remind my colleagues that we're not locking anything in tonight. This is just the pilot program as suggested by staff. And it's a thoughtful approach to see what works and what doesn't work for the following year, when it, and when it, if it is implemented for the community. So I'm okay with six months or I'm okay with a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
But you also, in reminding the residents about what this is about, you have to remind them about the Gardner Streetscape Plan. And that was the issue with the postcards that were not sent and then resent. And then people were upset because it didn't say something. And then it was a whole back and forth. And so if you're going to talk about this temporary permit parking district, you have to remind the residents in that way, in a concise way, that this is a happy middle. So if they are concerned about losing parking, as we have heard for a while about that issue, this was a way that they on Gardner would not have to worry about that. And I'm just saying for the fifth time, and that's the act of insanity that I always seem to barter with, that we are playing with fire here. And this is a smart middle ground solution to move forward. And if you want to send a postcard, you have to design it right. And there was a lot of issues over the last time when that happened. And this is not getting done in August. We all know this. This is not getting done anytime soon because that's, that's a postcard I don't want to design. So I'm just saying, I just think that we could move forward with six months or something like that and see what this is. And, you know, as someone who lives and walks up and down those streets, it also, removing those parking meters in that way is one reason. But having the residents be also able to park there helps prevent the issues of homelessness when we see RVs parking there as well. And then residents complaining about that, especially at Carson and Norton, where we've had a well-known drug house that's had a lot of issues. And a lot of the individuals that drive a UV over in that area, because I'm in touch with members of the community, they park down there too. And they do not have a permit. And it allows that community to feel more safe. So I'm just reiterating that I think we're going down the wrong road here.
I think, I think we're moving in a direction that we're just trying to get clarity on. Councilmember Meister?
Yes. I would just say, if it takes you two to four months to get through this postcard process, and then we do a pilot, if we decide to move forward with the pilot and we do a six-month pilot, we're at the year. And so we haven't wasted any additional time. And I think nobody was against people going door-to-door to get information. They were opposed to having people who had a bias towards a certain opinion going door-to-door to talk to people. That was, that was the problem.
Well, that was your interpretation of the bias, hiring a nonprofit organization or any individual in the organization. I even suggested Bike WeHo, our WeHo Bike Coalition to go door-to-door.
Well, that would have been biased.
Well, I don't, I mean, I'm looking at Kevin Burton right now, and the man could talk about everything going on in that street for, until God in memoriam and Methuselah was on the earth because he so knows that street, right? You could hire a third-party bike person to talk about it. But I think people were actually afraid of the results. Actually, that would come about with people understanding the Gardner Streetscape Plan. But I was voted down for suggesting us going door-to-door. And it's on the record. And you can't reinvent history like that, regardless of how we interpret.
I want to bring us back to the item quickly.
Thank you.
There was, it seemed like consensus, at least with the proposal on the table, to remove Carson. And my understanding is that we couldn't remove Carson with the current items on table. It would be requested from staff to continue the item anyways, to update the resolution to remove the Carson. So regardless of what else comes out of it, we need to do that tonight. So I hope that that's understood by council, that we're not going to be able to pass this tonight because there was consensus to remove the Carson portion of it. So whatever else comes out of that motion will be that. And Vice Mayor Heilman, I'll turn it to you.
Well, I understand the problems on this street. I think this street in particular, oftentimes the surveys show that they're over 100% parked, which means, as Councilmember Erickson was saying, people are parking illegally or they're parking in driveways extending out into the street. I think we've all seen the problems there and we need to address it. I just want to make sure that we're addressing it in a holistic way that makes sense. And making sure that there's community buy-in, I think, is, is a responsible thing for us to do. And I know, John, you're very close to that neighborhood because you live there, but not all of us are. And I think asking our staff to put out a postcard and asking for responses from the community about this proposal is a reasonable thing to do. Maybe we can at least approve in concept the idea that we are going to put some restrictions there if the community responds favorably to this pilot program. And we are also going to remove the Carson meters from the proposed program. So it's going to, as the mayor said, it's going to have to come back to us.
Councilmember Meister?
Yeah. It would be, it will be interesting also to do the postcards to see, in a sense, it's almost piloting a new way of, of looking at streets, restrictive parking and permit parking, being able to do that in areas where residents have been complaining for years that they can't get the signatures because they can't get into a building that's, you know, two doors down from them. So I think that that would actually be a very interesting way for us to find out if that's a good way to get to residents, to get to have their input on, on decisions that affect their daily lives. So I'm all for doing that.
Thank you. Is there any other?
I'll try a motion. I'll make a motion that we support in concept the idea of some restrictions on these streets, that we remove the Carson meters from the resolution, that this be brought back to us in a timely manner after staff has had an opportunity to survey the residents on the two streets.
Would you put a date certain to come back to us?
Do you think you can do that? I would love it by the beginning of August, but that may not be realistic. Can we say by the first meeting in September?
Yes, I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
Yes. And just real quick, a point of clarification. I believe there's some, we need to add the addresses to the resolution anyway. So when we bring it back, we'll make that clarification as well.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. One question before we.
Question for the motion maker that I seconded. So are we talking about a six-month pilot then, or still a year, or we'll just wait and see what it looks like at that time?
A year with six-month review, I thought.
I think a year with, a year with six-month review would be, and giving staff the authority to terminate earlier if it is not working and there's uproar.
Thank you.
Okay, so there is a motion on the floor. Does everyone understand the motion on the floor? Should we restate it? We're good? Okay, so we can start voting. And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to take a few-minute break before we come back and begin E2, which is the discussion on the 2025, 2026 year update to the, to your budget. Let's come back at?
8:55.
8:55, 5 till the hour. Beane, item E2, the fiscal year 2025-26, second year update to the two-year operating budget and capital work plan. Over to our wonderful staff representatives.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I will get us started. I am David Wilson, City Manager. Along with me is Christine Saifert, Assistant to the City Manager, and Melissa Lindley, the Budget Officer, as well as staff from all of the departments and divisions, in case you have questions regarding the work plans within the budget. I'm pleased to report that the recommended general fund budget before you is structurally balanced. The staff report includes several attachments for your review. There's the annual budget resolution, including a statement of changes to fund balance. Within that statement, there are some negative fund balance changes, and Melissa Lindley will discuss that as part of the presentation. Also, within the attachments are the pre-approved list of council member travel, a list of budgeted annual special events, and a link to the City Manager recommended fiscal year 2026 budget. Before we start getting to the presentation, I did want to read some changes to one of the recommendations and the resolution into the record, if the council does approve the budget as it is. These are related to the Proposition A purchases, based on the comments from Vice Mayor Howman earlier. So the current recommendation number two, authorize, it currently reads authorize the Director of Finance and Technology Services to allocate $2 million in general fund reserves for purchases of Prop A funds. We would add and direct staff to place additional Prop A purchases above the $2 million allocation on the consent calendar instead of new business, comma, and allocate $1 million in general fund reserves for social services contracts. So that just allows those Prop A purchases in the future to go on consent instead of new business. And then, within the resolution, on page three, section 11, that section would read, "The Director of Finance and Technology Services, or their designee, may negotiate the exchange of up to $2 million in general fund reserves for Proposition A funds. Any agreement to execute the negotiated exchange," and we would strike out upon, up to the approved amount, and then add, "including those exchanges above the $2 million allocation shall be approved by the City Council on the consent calendar." So those, if you do approve the budget as it is, those two changes will be made in the final document, or in resolution. All right, so we'll go to the presentation slides.
Good evening. Before we get started, would you like the full presentation with the slides or a condensed version?
Okay, I think the full presentation is wanted.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to go over the organizational updates that David will be presenting, and then I will start with the budget process, the fiscal year 26 proposed budget, and move on to our capital plan highlights.
And so the organizational changes, you did approve back in the May meeting, but we just wanted to provide this as a reminder because it is a significant change to the budget and a significant emphasis on the budget. What's shown on the screen now is our current org chart, and then we have recommended several changes that will be, have been approved by the council on the next slide. The biggest change was the addition of the Transportation and Mobility Division that will focus on all of our transit uses, as well as bike lanes and mobility-type uses. In addition to that, the council approved 11 new positions that starts this year, 10 or brand-new positions, and one was the Arts Coordinator position for the Playhouse, which will be recruited for once we're closer to completing the Playhouse. We won't go through all of these because, again, this was part of the May agenda, but more of a reminder that a significant part of the budget is these organizational shifts.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Melissa Lindley, the city's Budget Officer. I will provide a brief presentation on the city's second year, the second year update to the FY '25 and '26 two-year budget. I am pleased to report that the City Manager recommended budget for FY '26 is a structurally balanced budget. Our two-year budget process began in early 2024, and here's a quick look at the timeline. In spring of '24, the Finance and Budget Subcommittee held three meetings discussing the budget. In June, the two-year budget was approved and the FY '25 budget was adopted. In February of '25, we presented the mid-year budget review to council, and in March and May of '25, the second year update was heard by the Finance and Budget Subcommittee, again, with opportunity for community comments. On June 9, the proposed FY '26 budget was submitted to council as a receive-and-file item. This evening, we're here to discuss and adopt the second year of the two-year budget, and you'll find several attachments with the staff report, including the budget resolution, which David just spoke to, the pre-approved list for council member travel, the annual budgeted special events, and a link to the City Manager's recommended budget. The city budget primarily consists of two major fund types, the general fund and special funds. As you can see from this pie chart, special funds make up about 25% of our budget. Special funds are restricted for specific purposes, such as debt, transportation services, and various other uses, and the majority of the city's activities, about 75% of the budget, are accounted for in the general fund. This pays for the most of our programs, services, and the usual business of government. Tonight's discussion will primarily focus on the general fund. Attachment aid to the staff report includes the budget resolution, which authorizes the city to spend funds within the approved budget to conduct city business. Exhibit 1 to the resolution provides a one-page overview of the city's fiscal state, specifically the changes to fund balance. The budget for FY '26 presents a spending plan across all funds that anticipates total revenues of $202 million, inter-fund transfers of $21.2 million, operating expenses of $202 million. The budgeted amount for capital improvement projects is $12.4 million for all funds. For the general fund, we estimate that the balance at the end of FY '25 and the start of FY '26 will be $193 million. FY '26 revenues are projected to exceed expenditures by $28,938, with revenues of $167 million, operating expenditures of $153 million, and capital expenditures of $2.2 million. Transfers out to other funds are $11.9 million. The city's general fund budget is balanced, and we anticipate ending the fund, the ending fund balance at the same level as the beginning of the year, $193 million before drawdowns. There are a few funds where the change to fund balance is shown as a negative amount. For the most part, the budget includes one-time uses of fund balance for specific purposes. Examples of those are the Mezurar Fund, which includes a budget for implementing green bike lanes, the Housing Trust Fund, which includes funds to support operations of the Holloway interim housing program, and the Debt Administration and Bonds Fund, which represents an inter-fund transfer to support bond-eligible capital projects. There are also a few funds where the estimated ending fund balance is shown as a negative amount. The Proposition, the Proposition A Fund includes our city's Prop A allocation, as well as traded funds that we purchased from other jurisdictions. On tonight's council agenda, you've already discussed an additional trade of Prop A funds that was not accounted for in this change to fund balance. Lastly, there are a few funds with negative balances that we are working to address. Those include the Traffic Mitigation Fund, the Public Access Corporation Fund, and the Parking Improvement and Parking Permit Funds. In preparation for the next two-year budget cycle, we will be working on addressing any structural issues in these funds. we will be working on addressing any structural issues in these funds. This chart gives you a high-level representation of the proposed general fund budget placed in its historical context. On the left, the solid bars represent the actual revenues and expenditures from prior fiscal years. You can see the economic effects of the pandemic reflected in '20 and '21. As we emerged from the pandemic, starting in fiscal year '22, the city experienced substantial economic growth. This was due to the post-pandemic rebound plus new revenues from sources like Measure E, local sales tax, bus shelter advertising, and development agreements for billboards. However, it is important to note that the rate of revenue growth has slowed in the last year. We are projecting a more moderate increase in the near future. The highlighted bars show the current FY '25 mid-year budget of $162 million and the proposed FY '26 budget of $167 million, representing a growth of just 2.9%. This moderate increase reflects a few factors: economic uncertainty stemming from federal policies, persistent inflation, and sustained high interest rates, which could affect tourism and consumer spending in the upcoming year. Despite these factors, it's crucial to highlight that the city is in a sound financial position. This is thanks to our commitment to prudent fiscal policies, balancing conservative budgeting with moderate growth, and maintaining diverse revenue types. The city has significantly benefited from the foresight to develop new revenue sources. These have helped support the program and service expansions we've implemented in recent years, as well as the organizational enhancements included in the FY '26 budget, all while building healthy revenue reserves. This slide provides a high-level overview of general fund revenues. Approximately 70% of our revenues come from taxes, and the remaining 30% from licenses and permits, charges for services, use of money on property, fines and forfeitures, and other revenues. We anticipate continued strong performance in tax revenues overall. The year-over-year change in the budget for taxes is $2.1 million, or a 1.9% increase from the FY '25 mid-year budget. For all revenues combined, we project a $4.7 million increase, or 2.9% from the FY '25 mid-year budget. This slide is an overview of some major revenue trends. Sales tax has grown significantly since FY '19, our last full pre-pandemic fiscal year. Much of this growth is thanks to Measure E, our local sales tax, which has added about $15 million per year in new revenues. While demand for goods and services remains strong, sustained higher prices from inflation and uncertainty are impacting sales tax revenues, our FY '26 projection reflects a 1.1% decrease in sales tax revenues from the FY '25 mid-year budget. In recent years, transient occupancy tax, or hotel tax, revenues have recovered and surpassed pre-pandemic levels. Given the uncertainty in the mark of how current federal policies might impact foreign tourism, our FY '26 budget of $33.2 million assumes a modest increase of 2.1%. This includes the anticipated reopening of the former Standard Hotel in FY '26. Property tax revenues reflect the strong real estate market in the Los Angeles region. Property values in West Hollywood remain high, and the city continues to see increases from property taxes. Property tax revenues are projected to grow by 4% to $29.6 million in FY '26. Other taxes includes receipts from businesses, business and franchise taxes, and motor vehicle in-lu taxes. Our budget projections reflect revenue growth for these taxes, totaling $0.7 million in FY '26 compared to the mid-year budget. And lastly, development agreements is a new category that we're highlighting. Revenues from development agreements include payments from development projects, including billboards. Revenues from billboards have grown substantially and are anticipated to increase further as more applications for the Sunset Arts and Advertising Program are processed and new billboards are constructed. Development Agreement revenues are projected to grow to $12.6 million in FY '26. Our general fund expenditures are grouped into five major categories. Contracts account for nearly 50% of the city's general fund expenditures, and these include the sheriff's services, citywide operations and maintenance services, social and human services, and professional service contracts. Personnel costs account for 30% of the budget, covering wages and benefits, and other operating costs, capital costs, and other financing uses make up the remainder of the general fund budget. Our focus on organizational support is reflected in the FY '26 expenditure budget. The $6.3 million increase in the personnel budget from the FY '25 mid-year includes increases in healthcare and other MOU provisions, as well as the organizational enhancements that David spoke about earlier. To support this important investment in our organization and the proposed operational enhancements, we are making targeted budget reductions to contract services that will now be provided by these new positions and to operating budgets that have historical savings. This results in a decrease of $1.5 million, and the combined changes result in a net increase of $4.7 million from the mid-year budget, ensuring we maintain a balanced budget that provides organizational support and operational enhancements. The proposed budget continues to focus on the priorities identified in recent years: financial stability and diverse revenue streams, community safety and well-being, infrastructure development, community services that enhance neighborhood and economic vitality, arts and culture, and community engagement. The changes to the budget support increases in costs for current services and programs, as well as some new funding summarized here. A few highlights include security equipment and services, community programming, owner's representative services for the capital program, and an additional $1 million in supplemental funding for social service contracts. As part of our budget process, the city prepares a five-year capital plan to ensure we make appropriate long-term investments to preserve and enhance our built environment. The general fund budget includes capital maintenance expenditures of $2.2 million to maintain streets, sidewalks, and city facilities. Across all funds, the budget includes $12.4 million to support the city's capital improvement plan. Major capital investments are typically made with long-term financing, and the bonds, lease revenue bonds, the, which were, sorry, the issued in FY '24 will provide $30 million over the next three years to support the capital program. We recently completed the parking lot at 8120 Santa Monica Boulevard in Crescent Heights, and are nearing completion of the rehab of the Holloway Interim Housing Project. And here you can see our capital, our, the city's major capital projects highlighted and sorted into two groups. On the left are projects that are currently in design or under construction. On the right are projects that are in planning or pre-planning stages. I won't go through them all, as you've seen them in multiple updates recently. So, thank you. City leadership will continue to guide efforts in responsible fiscal stewardship. This includes considering the long-term staffing and financial resources required to initiate new policies and programs, while continuing to advance the city's current priorities and work plan. As always, the health and safety of the West Hollywood community remain our top priorities. That concludes the budget presentation this evening, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I don't see any public comment on the budget item tonight, so we can get right into questions and discussion. Vice Mayor Heilmann?
Well, before we, I have a question, but before I do, thank you. And I want to thank Melissa and Christine and our City Manager and all of the staff. Pretty much everyone works on the budget, and they work on it all year long. So, thank you for all of the work that you do. And given the uncertainty in, in Washington, and given the uncertainty generally, I think it's really remarkable that we are prepared to adopt a budget, or at least you presented us with a budget that is balanced and also involves significant investment in additional social services funding. So, I just wanted to comment on that, and thank you for that. The one question I have, and you don't have to answer it tonight, but I hope somebody can look at it. I recall a while ago, this is probably 10 years ago, we adopted a policy that involved $1 million into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund on an annual basis. And I don't know if that's reflected or if we have somehow changed that policy. So, is that something that, you know, maybe that's something the Subcommittee can look at going forward, how we're addressing that?
Thank you, that's an excellent question. We did take the direction, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of a decade ago, to make sure that our Affordable Housing Trust Fund always increased by at least $1 million and in terms of the revenues that it received on a year-over-year basis. And so, we do look at that every year, at the revenues received. And so far, we have always received, as part of our in-lu payments, revenues of over $1 million. And so, we have not had to use reserves to increase the Housing Trust Fund balance, but we do, on an annual basis, review that revenue, the revenues that enter the fund.
Great, thank you, that's my only question.
Terrific, Council Member Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a, I have a couple of questions. I, I wondered how we are planning for CalPERS, like retirement, that's going to be coming. We have, we have a lot of people that have retired recently, that will be retiring. And also, we've increased the number of employees, which I supported. But, but then how do we, where in, where in this budget does, do we sort of plan? Because we have responsibilities as a city, right, towards, towards those costs?
Yes, and that is built into the Wages and Benefits budget. So, in addition to all of the benefits that the employees receive, the city's share of the retirement payments are part of that budget.
And we feel that we have, that we are covered, I mean, for the future?
Yes, so, most of our payments for CalPERS are pay-as-you-go. So, we're paying that money annually with our budget for those who may be retiring at the end of the year. There may be some supplemental payments that are nominal, that the city plays out separately, but for the most part, all of our payments are pretty much pay-as-you-go. And so, there's not going to be some lump-sum payments at the end of the next few years when a lot of people retire.
Great, and then, I remember years ago, when I first got on council, there was a discussion with the county about watershed, and that the city owed like $12 million or something like that, some ridiculous amount of money for, for something that had happened before, I think we were even a city. Are we still liable for that amount of money? Or is the Measure W, was it W, Measure something, where they talked about the watershed? It was that, did the county decide to do that instead of trying to get money from, from us and from other cities?
We're going to look over to our city attorney for a second.
I think we're going to need more information on what the specific request was from the county to be able to answer that.
It was a number of cities, it had to do with the watershed. I don't know with Vice Mayor.
I think it had something to do. It was something to do with runoff and pollutants into the watershed, where there was a lawsuit that had been filed, and I think there was liability not only on the county, but they were trying to say all of the cities were also responsible for it.
And so, I think Measure W and some stormwater projects were supposed to address the issue. I'm not familiar with the exact status of any litigation, but I think the investment in certain watershed-wide stormwater projects are supposed to help the problem.
Right, and that's what I thought with that measure had to do with, but it would be nice to get a follow-up on that, not necessarily tonight, but at some point. My next question is, you know, we talk about reserves and putting a certain percentage of, you know, of our revenues into reserves for rainy day. It's, I don't, where do we see that, like, in the budget? Like, do we have that as a budgeted item? That, you know, X amount goes to reserves? And I don't mean reserves in a specific place, I mean, well, general fund reserves.
So, as part of the budget policy, there are, there's a policy that is, we have a rainy day fund, that there's a certain amount that goes in reserves. But that's not shown in the budget document. Those are shown in the annual financial report at the end of the year. Basically, it's, so, when you look at the general fund, and it shows ending fund balance of $193 million, like, those funds are reserved for various things. So, we have 35% reserve for emergencies. There's some, like, $35 million for capital projects. There's some for PERS obligations. We don't list those in the budget document, but they are listed in the annual financial report. But they should add up to that $193 million number.
Okay. So, I, I see that, you know, for fiscal year 2025, our general fund is plus $55,000, which isn't, wasn't, isn't a very big buffer. 2026 is $29,000. In the all funds, it's, it's a big negative. Is that because of our debt? Is that because of the bonds we've taken out? So, in other words, fiscal year 2025, it's like negative almost $21 million, and 2026 is negative 8.5 million when you look at revenues to, to expenses. So, I, I'm just wondering, is that, is that because of debt? Because of the bonds, that, the money we owe on the bonds?
Yeah, I, I think it's a number of things. Some of it is that debt and being paid for, for projects, as we pay down projects. Some of it is just the major capital projects. And so, some of those we budget for over the course of years. And so, there, we're seeing portions hit in certain years, but we don't have revenues coming in in those same years. So, I think it's a combination of the debt and the major projects.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Erickson.
I'll just add my comments. I want to thank the Budget Subcommittee. I know you had three additional meetings.
More to come still.
More to come, great, looking forward to hearing those reports, congratulations. But I also want to thank staff on this item, as well as all the department heads. A budget is a statement of priorities. And when I looked through this document, I really saw the priorities that I think Vice Mayor Heilmann really echoed, and that's not only a balanced budget, you know, when you looked at having money, being one of the very few, if not only, cities that has money and what we're spending it on. We're spending it on our workers at our city hall, our incredible staff, but also then saying, with everything that's going on, we're actually going into our reserves. Two or so years ago, when then Mayor Schein and I were on the Budget Subcommittee, we wanted to redirect the investment policies in the rainy day fund, and we completely updated that, right? And so, we're seeing that really good benefit come about for what could potentially be something that happens in the nearby future with our fund, federal government, or a recession that we all don't want to happen. But it's great to see different businesses, as well as our TOT, manage and maintain and continue to come back. But additionally, it's, it's really a testament of values when we're saying we're going to go into our reserves as a community, $1 million. And maybe, David, if I would just ask if you could talk maybe a little bit about, because I know few human services commissioners aren't aware that they are going to be getting an extra $1 million to allocate, well, somewhere around that amount, I know it's 7525, but they're actually getting extra money to allocate for the much-needed programs that are being cut at all levels. And, and we are seeing that happen with disastrous impacts. Trusted organizations like APLA and others are laying off long-term staff because of their severe budget cuts, and that's. And that's horrific. Artists from across the nation are no longer getting grants and/or being denied grants that they once did get. And it's really, I think, a wonderful testament to this city and our longevity. And I want to thank Vice Mayor Heilman for helping, you know, not only set up where and how our budget was managed and handled and where we saw those revenues, but that forward-thinking longevity of previous councils is really something to be exemplified. And so I would just ask maybe, David, if you could talk about that, because I've said it to basically human services commissioners, that you're getting more money, but what does that mean? And that will happen. And I think, you know, we want to make sure we're diligent with what's happening. But it just really, when I go across different cities in the region, and I think when we go to our West Side Cities COG or other cities that are really, really struggling right now. They're having to tax their residents for emergency reasons. They're having to sell their own city property to pay off multiple lawsuits that are coming about as a result of claims that have occurred to a whole host of other issues. West Hollywood is continuing to have a strong fiscal sense of responsibility, but an ability to go into the pocketbook and write a check for what we need to do to support our communities now more than ever. And so I just really want to thank the staff, who really were very diligent with that and the time that they put into that, really careful calculation. So thank you very much, both of you. And David, I'll turn it back to you.
I'm actually going to defer to our acting Human Services and Rent Stabilization Director to talk a little bit about the RFP process and the funding and what we're doing.
Thank you. So, you know, you said it really well. The budget is a statement of the city's values. And in the Human Services and Rent Stabilization Department and the Human Services Division, the city invests in the community in a number of ways. One of those, the division's budget is approximately $15 million. And one of the ways that we invest in the community is by funding direct social services for community members with contracted agencies that provide a variety of services, ranging from social work, housing assistance, legal services, food and nutrition programs, medical services, services for the unhoused, to name only a few. And our budget, in this fiscal year, fiscal year '25 that we're in now, that contract budget is approximately $7 million. And at the urging of the City Council Subcommittee, the Finance and Budget Subcommittee, the City Manager's recommended budget includes an increase of $1 million to that particular line item. So, you know, that's a significant increase from $7 to $8 million. And that will be included during the funding allocation recommendations process that is happening this summer with the Human Services Commission and staff. And then staff will be bringing that forward to the council for final decisions and approvals at the end of the summer, in August, I believe.
Is that all set for you, Councilmember Erickson?
I just wanted to say good luck to the Human. Good luck to the Human Services Commission on having to figure out how those dollars are spent. But, you know, I know it's a big ask, and so however that community process has continued, I know. I don't know if, I've tried to tell a lot of people that we're giving them more money, much to David's ill will, that he doesn't want me to. But it is important because, you know, and I think personally, just for me, stating, saying as a statement of what we're doing, how do we help make a stopgap for STI prevention, HIV/AIDS? But specifically, as I hear from all over, artists, filmmakers, people that are try seniors, people with disabilities. Right now, Project Angel Food is running an incredible program to get people impacted by the horrific raids on ICE food because they can't go to the supermarket. So how do we creatively think out of the box right now is my challenge to you all and my challenge to the Human Services and then Arts Commissions when they start getting hopefully more dollars to allocate in much-needed ways. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hing.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you very much for the robust presentation. As I told you last time, it was a lot of blood, sweat and tears that go into this report to provide to the council and to the community. So thank you. And I'm going to ask you the same question that I asked you during our call. We're so lucky to be able to dip into reserves. How did you determine the $1 million mark to pull for social services? Because that's incredible that we're able to do that.
Thank you. That's an excellent question. That was a recommendation based on what we are currently funding and what we are looking at in the future and what our staff capabilities are. So if we expand too much beyond $1 million, then we run into challenges relating to how do we appropriately steward those funds and make sure that what the city is contracting for, that we're able to deliver with our current staffing capabilities?
I mean, $1 million is a lot for our small town, for the services that we provide for our community members. So I applaud the good stewardship that our city manager, our amazing city staff, our team has been able to build, to be able to allow us to do that, to pull from the reserves.
Just before you change subjects, I will, so this year, that is coming from reserves. Our hope is that, because these are three-year contracts, that in the next two years, that it will be incorporated into the base budget as ongoing funding. So it's not that we're drawing down from reserves every year to cover that funding.
But we're drawing down from reserve because these are, this is a high-impact need for an economic and social time that, you know, with all these cuts at the federal level, this is where we need it most. This is where our community members need it most, especially in our social services with things being cut left and right. So I applaud. So thank you so much for that work. Because there are cities out there that can't even pay their CalPERS dues, right? And then CalPERS sues them because they got to get their money. We're not in that position. We're able to, we have the funds to take care of our community members, to pay our employees, to hire more employees, to create another division, to help offset workload for our staff here who work very hard. So I applaud the City Manager's Office and the city leadership for putting us in a position to be able to do that. And this budget, it's a fiscally responsible budget that not only keeps us balanced, but makes bold investments in the future of West Hollywood. And that includes our staffing and our programs for our community. And good government doesn't happen by accident. It happens line by line as listed in this item. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for your work on this. It's been a real honor to serve on the Subcommittee with Vice Mayor Heilman and before that with Mayor Erickson at the time, for the last two years, to see this through. I'm really proud of the choice the city has made to draw from the reserves for that $1 million addition to the social service contract. As we know, it's a really critical year to do that and the plan to move forward. And I'm also really excited and grateful to city manager for hearing these discussions for the past six months for me around the Transportation Mobility Division. I know when the community asks about our commitment to transportation, we feel it, but now we can see it in real time. And we have a lot of opportunity to continue to grow and forge deeper relationships in the coming years ahead around some strategic transportation opportunities, specifically on the West Side. So just really thrilled that we'll have clarified space for that work to happen for our city. I also know that you had mentioned that there's a stagnation to come in terms of revenues. And I know that we're in the midst of a zoning improvement program. So curious, and I know I've raised this at the Budget Subcommittee level, but just about what we can do to sort of anticipate or study the potential for a property tax-based evolution as that zoning improvement program comes in. I don't need to have any questions about it now. I just wanted to sort of flag that. And then I'm also really looking forward to the upcoming meetings that Vice Mayor Heilman and I will continue to have. I know there's a couple keen eyes out in the community who said, wait, aren't we approving that budget at the end of June? Why are there extra meetings on the calendar still? But for the community to know that we'll be continuing that work as a Subcommittee to look at our outstanding council priorities and how we want to further prioritize those outstanding council priorities, in addition to how we want to address the events calendar, which is a really great way that we organize as a community and a really strategic opportunity we have to better align our resources as well. So appreciate the opportunity, continue to work with our Vice Mayor and our staff on that space. And just thank you all, all of staff. I know this has been a really big conversation this year in terms of making sure that we were investing in all the capacity we needed as a city to tackle what's ahead. And I think we are feeling really confident about what's here. I already see emotions. So just thank you again for the work. And Vice Mayor, you'll get the final word.
Well, I just moved that we approved the recommended budget with the changes that David read into the resolution previously and also adopt all of the other items here, the division work plans, the list of pre-approved organizations, and the authorizing the Director of Finance to allocate $2 million in general fund reserves for the purchase, et cetera. All of the items.
Great. So there's a motion and a second on the floor, and we will start voting. And the motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. I kind of want to clap also. It's really exciting. Thank you all. We will move to Item E3, our update on the Out Athletes Fund Pride House Los Angeles/West Hollywood event.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Megan O'Reilly, the Event Services Supervisor. Item E3 on this evening's agenda provides an update on the Out Athlete Fund's proposal for a Pride House event in West Hollywood during the 2028 Games in Los Angeles. And it seeks the City Council's approval to negotiate a multi-year agreement with Out Athlete Fund, which would provide financial support for a Pride House in West Hollywood. A Pride House is a venue welcoming LGBTQ+ fans, athletes, and allies during large-scale international sporting events such as global tournaments and games. And it's a place where both residents and visitors can view the competition with others and learn about LGBTQ+ athletes and LGBTQ+ contributions to sport. Pride House stands as a symbol of inclusivity, acceptance, and celebration of diversity within the LGBTQ+ community. Out Athlete Fund approached the city in 2024 with a proposal for West Hollywood to serve as a venue for a Pride House during the 2028 Games in Los Angeles. And following the initial proposal, a city delegation traveled to the 2024 Paris Games to assess the feasibility and observe best practices related to a Pride House in West Hollywood. In November 2024, the City Council authorized a formal partnership with Out Athlete Fund. Out Athlete Fund is requesting $1 million in cosponsorship funds from the city to support a 17-day Pride House event in West Hollywood Park during the summer of 2028. The proposed event includes a variety of programming, including interactive experiences, medal ceremonies, art projects, viewing areas, concerts, and exhibitions, among other activities. It would be substantially free and open to the public, but would provide for a ticketed, for some ticketed programming, excuse me. Out Athlete Fund will also be soliciting sponsorships from other government entities and corporate partners in order to support the full cost of the proposed event. If approved this evening, staff will work to negotiate an agreement with Out Athlete Fund. The agreement would define the eligible uses for the city's cosponsorship funds, as well as provide a timeline by which Out Athlete Fund must demonstrate core competencies and meet key performance benchmarks. Staff will look to bring that agreement back before the council for its approval at a meeting later this summer. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And Michael Ferrara is here representing Out Athlete Fund and is also available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Michael signed up for public comment. Maybe we'll take his public comment and then keep him close in case we need any quick questions answered. Thank you for being here, Michael.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank city staff, City Manager Wilson and his staff for working with us so closely and to come to a really reasonable proposal and this offer of support from the city. So because that's going to open the doors to everything else we're trying to do. I just want to give you a few, what I think are the fun updates that are already happening in our efforts to bring, since we're not going to have official competition in our city, what's going to be a huge event that's already on the map for the Olympics, for all the three bodies that are governing. We started this past Saturday with our first fundraising event, which is the start of our three-year plan to make sure that our whole region is aware of Pride House being available to them. Of course, we're going to celebrate in our city, but we want this to be someplace where people come from around the world, but certainly around the county. So I'm really excited to report our event the other night at the Autry Museum in Griffith Park. We showed a movie. It was a celebration of women in sports with the screening of "A League of Their Own." We had over 500 people there, and what I loved about it was the diversity that was there. There were people from all parts of the county. Very, very excited about Pride House. We have worked already with the International Olympic Committee, with the US OPC, the United States Olympic and Paralympic Committee, and LA28. We are on the cusp of being officially recognized by all three bodies, which is really important because that means that we will go with them to corporate sponsors that are official sponsors of the Olympics. If you don't have that official recognition, you're not able to do that. So these two things about the next three years is really about taking your investment and raising at least five times that much to make sure that this event can be everything we want it to be. Another thing that we want to bring is the excitement of things like we are on the list for US, all US medal winners will come to Pride House and be celebrated on a daily basis during the Olympics. I think that's exciting, in addition to the Out Athletes that we will make sure are aware and we will celebrate them as well. We are on the Torch Relay Committee, which means that we are advocating on a daily basis for the torch relay to come through our city so that we have that chance and also to have members of our community carry the torch and represent us. I think that's one of the most exciting things. We're working closely with the Director of the Athlete Village, which will be at UCLA. Actually, the closest thing to the athletes that are here will be West Hollywood. And they're very excited to know that we're going to be a venue where there's a dedicated athlete space and that West Hollywood is the obvious place for them to come when they want to experience the city that they're competing in. So we have all the most fun here, both for our community and beyond, our allies as well. So sharing those things with you, I just want to thank you all so much for, this is an honor for me to be CEO of Pride House Los Angeles/West Hollywood. And if you haven't seen the logo yet, the thing that I want to point out most about our logo is that we have a flame in our logo that is trans colors. And even though we're not a policymaking body, we want to make sure that the trans athletes and the trans members of our community know that the flame is being kept alive for them, no matter how they're able to participate. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'll open up the questions or comments for my colleagues. Vice Mayor Heilman and Councilmember Meister, are you getting in the queue?
Well, thank you, Michael, and thank you to staff for bringing this forward. I really appreciate, I wasn't able to attend Saturday. I sent my donation, but, which is more important than me being there. And I'm glad to hear that it was a very inclusive event. And I think that's one of the things that we've talked about previously, making sure that the board and the organization is really representative of the entirety of the LGBTQ+ community. So I hope that's part of the efforts that we're working with the organizers. Secondly, I want to make sure that the programming, that the city is actively involved in making suggestions and making sure that that programming is consistent with the sort of goals that we set forth when we initiated this item. And then those were my only two comments that I want to make. I'm very supportive of this. I do believe that the torch came through West Hollywood back in 1984 along sunset. So hopefully, they'll be back here in a few years. But thank you for all of your work.
Councilmember Meister?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had a question about how much money is being contributed by the city of LA? As my colleague said in an earlier item, $1 million is a lot of money for this small town. And, you know, I think back to West Hollywood, to Pride, when it used to be LA Pride, and we were the ones putting all this money into we were the ones putting all this money into this, you know, into Pride. And so we eventually changed, we became, you know, WeHo Pride, and we ran things, and we said, this is going to be, you know, this is going to be our city's event. I guess, so I guess I have a thing about that, you know, Pride House LA or Los Angeles- WeHo. I feel like if we're contributing the bulk of the money, and obviously we're going to be, you know, partners from the beginning, why, you know, I guess I should ask first, not assume, is the city of Los Angeles giving any money to this endeavor?
So at this point right now, the county has a proposal in front of it, and we're, we've been told that within about a month or so, the county's going to have their first money in for this year. We have a $2.5 million proposal into Supervisor Horvath's office. The city of Los Angeles, we haven't been able to get on the docket for that yet, but, you know, because-
I can't understand why.
Yeah, LA28 is a little bit, a little bit challenged right now. But then the state also, the California State Legislature's LGBT Caucus is also carrying a proposal for us for $2.5 million. So we did ask for significantly less from the city, you know, knowing that it's the city of West Hollywood, it's not the state, it's not the county. So we are, everybody's going to share in this, and we've been told by the city that we'll be able to sit with them very soon and talk to them about their contribution.
Okay, and then my other question, and I'm very supportive of this, is there are obviously a lot of free events, but there are some ticketed events. And again, I look, I look at LA, at WeHo Pride as an example of, you know, the city is giving a lot of money. Could some percentage of those tickets be free to our residents who maybe cannot afford to buy tickets?
Absolutely. I can promise that without reservation. That's already part of my plan, is to make sure that part of our sponsorship dollars goes toward giving, giving tickets. Even, even at our event the other night, we gave away about 100 tickets to community members that couldn't otherwise afford it. So that's, that's a value of Pride House, it's a value of our organization for sure.
Okay, great. And then I had one, the other, the last thing, I just, you know, I'm, I'm very nervous about, you know, the political landscape and how it could possibly affect the Olympics and Paralympics and other events that are coming or supposed to come to the, to the city of LA. What happens in terms of finances that are being given in advance, right? Because I think we're doing things in advance if, you know, God forbid, we can't do the Olympics here because everyone's boycotting us?
Absolutely. I, I think what was responsible was that for the first two years of funding from the city in the proposal, the way that we're structuring it, it's a smaller, it's a small amount for the first two years, which is really basically to fund the absolutely necessary things we need to do to plan such a huge event this far in advance. So for, for this year and next year, there's a small amount coming from the city, most of the funding will come in 2027 and 2028, which, again, I think is responsible, given, given that. Our conversations, constant conversations, like, like every other week, we're talking to the bodies, the IOC, the US OPC, and LA28. There was an early concern about what might happen to LA with the current political landscape, and they are going full forward ahead with LA's Olympics. So we don't, they don't have any doubt that it's going forward, but with all due respect to what's going on in the country right now, that we don't know. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Hing.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, staff, and thank you, Michael, for the very engaging presentation. I'm excited for Pride House, and I know that our entire community is also as well. So I don't know if you're allowed to talk about this, but what's your overall fundraising goal for Pride House?
So the budget for the event itself right now, as it stands, is about $12 million. And we had, we started last year in Paris already engaging potential sponsors. So, you know, we have sponsors that have said, yes, we're going to sponsor you, we just don't have, we don't know how much yet. So Procter &amp; Gamble, Nissan, a lot of the Delta, a lot of the traditional Olympic sponsors are already on board because they know about the tradition of Pride House International, and they're also very excited about what we can do. That's much more significant here because of the resources and the city we are. So yes, right now, that's a $12 million budget. I'm pretty confident in it. We have added two board members that are deeply experienced in doing events like this. Our new board member, Mark Ponter, is actually the producer of the FIFA opening ceremonies in all three countries. He's done those before, and he's been involved with the Olympics as well. So I feel like we're going to be able to be incredibly responsible, incredibly, you know, ahead of the curve. We're going to be able to do this efficiently, and we're going to, we're going to kick ass with this, with this event, so.
And I have complete faith that you will. Of the 12 million or more, how much do you anticipate that to have to be public versus private?
I'm thinking that about 40% is going to be public, yeah, about 60% is-
That's a good amount. And I always like to ask for contingency. So do you have any contingencies in place should you not reach any milestone goals? Will programs be cut back or just so that we have an idea?
Yeah, I, I mean, our plan for cutting back would be sort of the bells and whistles because the basic part, the basic idea of Pride House is to make sure that we have an inclusive and celebratory place for people to go and celebrate the Olympics together, for them to be able to watch on the big screens, for them to be able to engage in sports activities. Those things will be far less than having a concert stage or having, you know, like I said, those, those kinds of bells and whistles that are add-ons, that are kind of flash and substance, flash more than substance. But the basic things are going to cost far less, so we can cut back to those basic things so that, free of charge, everybody can come to the park, watch the Olympics inside and out on big screens, have food, have drink, you know, be able to be with their community all day, every day for the 17 days.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
You bet.
This is such an exciting proposal. Thank you so much for your work on it. I know that the Pride House in Paris, sounds like it was such a success, members of our team here got to go experience that. Milan is next year in 2026, and then Brisbane after that. So just the opportunity to be connected to this global sphere of community and LGBTQ athletes at such a moment when we have to remind people that sports are for everyone means so much and is quite a significant investment for us to be making as a city. So thank you for championing this. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we got it.
So I made a motion to approve?
Yeah.
Sorry.
You're doing great. What else, though? Eric?
The motion passes 5-0.
Amazing. We'll move to item E4, the update for the city's plans for 2028 Games.
And we were going to hear this with B7.
B7, that's correct.
Perfect.
Do you have any for a big report or anything? I forgot who wanted to keep going. Okay, great. Not a lot. Just make sure.
You wanted to hold it.
I think it was her.
It was me.
It was Vice Mayor Higginson. It's good stuff. Okay. Ready when you are.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm Jackie Rocco, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I'm joined here tonight by Laura Byrie, our Director of Economic Development, Christine Safrid, our Acting Director of Human Services and Rent Stabilization, and Rebecca Eman, our Arts Manager. The item before you this evening is an update on the city's plans and efforts for the 2028 Games, and I am going to give you a very brief overview of, you know, the city staff working group, and then I will pass it on to my colleagues here to give you an update on these other items and themes for the Games. On October 18th, 2024, the City Council received an update item on the city's 2024 Paris Olympic, Olympics delegation that traveled to Paris in August to explore for our city the opportunities and best practices related to the planning and preparation for the LA 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games. To execute on these plans, in the spring of this year, the city formed an interdepartmental working group comprised of, it's an internal working group of key staff members led by the City Manager's Office to oversee the planning, coordination, and management of impacts related to the 2028 Olympics. This group is comprised of seven departments from the City Manager, Communications, Community Development, Community Safety, Public Works, Economic Development, and Community Services. The working group's primary objective is to ensure the seamless preparation and execution of the Olympic activations in the city of West Hollywood while addressing potential challenges such as traffic congestion, security concerns, and infrastructure demands. Furthermore, this group, this working group is designed to serve as a bridge to neighboring cities, fostering inner-city collaboration and communication, and ultimately enhancing the overall experience for residents and visitors alike. Our working group had its first meeting in April of this year, and the meeting was a kickoff to discuss the opportunities that the city will have to host events and activations during the Games like the Pride House and art activations, along with other community engagement initiatives. The committee discussed departmental priorities and set expectations for the cadence of committee and subcommittee meetings. Additionally, the committee emphasized the importance of using the World Cup in the summer of 2026 and the Super Bowl in February of 2027 as opportunities to prepare for the LA 28 Olympic and Paralympic Games. Now, following, you will receive a more detailed update on the themes discussed by the working committee, which include local business participation and Visit West Hollywood engagement that will be presented by Laura Byrie, fan zones and Pride House activations presented by Christine Safrid, and arts and culture programming presented by Rebecca Eman. I'll pass it on to Laura Byrie.
Thank you, Jackie. So regarding our local business participation, I wanted to share that the city will be engaging with our business community as part of this larger community effort. We'll be working with our businesses to be able to provide themed food and beverage offerings during these different times, as well as special dinners or activations. Additionally, staff is going to continue to identify ways in which the business community wants to engage in city-sponsored events related to the several upcoming sporting events over the next three years. And then with regard to Visit West Hollywood, who is our tourism and marketing organization here in the city, since 2020, Visit West Hollywood has been coordinating conversations between West Hollywood Hotels and the LA 28 Organizing Committee in order to gauge interest in contracting room bookings and specifically room blocks directly for the upcoming Games. As of February 2024, Visit West Hollywood has received confirmation that two West Hollywood Hotels have signed directly with LA 28, and an additional five hotels are contracted through On Location. On Location is LA 28's exclusive hospitality packaging partner that is coming up with hospitality packages for individuals looking to visit the area. Other West Hollywood Hotels have also expressed interest, but they are participating and negotiating directly with the organization independently of Visit West Hollywood. And I want to share that Visit West Hollywood continues to remain in discussions with our key global travel trade partners, looking at exploring packaging opportunities that promote stays and bookings in West Hollywood, not only during the upcoming 2028 Games, but as well as all the upcoming sporting, major sporting events occurring over the next three years. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Christine.
Thank you, Laura. I'll talk to you very briefly about fan zones and Pride House. We just heard the discussion from our city staff and Michael Ferrara of Pride House. So you know that we are anticipating a large and engaging activation in West Hollywood Park. In addition, one of the many ways in which West Hollywood will anticipate participating in the 28 Games and other upcoming large-scale sporting events is through these fan zone activations. And fan zones are areas that are specifically activated during major sporting events to create communal viewing opportunities and celebration sites. And they are related to the free and open-to-the-public fansite activations that are regularly set up outside major sporting events on the day of these events. I'm sure many of you are familiar with those events outside of soccer games, outside of basketball games, outside of football games. And as well, we had the opportunity to visit many of these sites when we attended the Paris Olympics as part of the city delegation. So core components of the fan zones typically include seating, shade, large viewing screens, free activities that are sports-related, often local food and beverage offerings for purchase, and general kind of communal spaces and cohesive branding across the city or the larger area. So we are exploring fan zones at both West Hollywood Park in coordination with Pride House or Pride House activations so that there are no conflicts, as well as at our other parks, primarily Plummer Park, but we're also looking at other opportunities. And we are planning to pilot these activations in the years leading up to the Olympics, using the 2026 World Cup as our first kind of fan zone kickoff, and then also looking at other major sports activations on the, on the road up to the Olympics. So those, that's an update on the fan zones, and now I'll turn this over to Rebecca Eman for the arts and cultural programming update.
Thanks, Christine. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. My name is Rebecca Eman, I'm the Arts Manager. I'm pleased to share an overview of the city's plans for a three-year initiative of arts and culture programming in the lead-up to the 2028 Games. The placeholder title for the art plan is West Hollywood's Creative Triennium 2025 through 2028. The plan lays out a bold and inclusive vision for cultural programming leading up to the 2028 Olympic and Paralympic Games, with the goal to create an immersive experience where culture is everywhere, all the time. The word "triennium" defines its three-year period, and the use of creative is inclusive and goes beyond traditional art forms to include food, design, community events, and more. This title fully complies with LA 28 and IOC branding guidelines, and it avoids trademark conflicts. We know that visitors love to eat, sleep, and play in West Hollywood. This art plan positions the city as a cultural anchor for the region leading up to and during the 2028 Games, building on West Hollywood's strong arts foundation while creating room to experiment and innovate. This plan is a strategic investment in the city's economy. As we learned in a 2022 Economic Impact Study, nonprofit arts and culture activity generated 12.4 million in direct economic impact in the city. Continued investment in the arts through these initiatives defined in the plan will strengthen both community and local economy and leave a legacy well beyond 2028. As Los Angeles prepares to host major global sporting, sporting events, in the years leading up to the 2028 Games, West Hollywood has a prime opportunity to tap into that energy with a series of creative cultural activations. The art activations proposed in the plan are designed to reflect West Hollywood's creative spirit and amplify our presence during major sporting events. First up, Disco Foot, a brilliant combination of art and sport where professional dancers perform a game of soccer. Expect twerking, disco balls, a live DJ, and high-energy choreography on a soccer pitch. Teams are scored by a panel of judges on the number of goals and aesthetics of performance. It's the ultimate way to kick off West Hollywood's celebration of the FIFA World Cup in 2026. The performance has been presented across Europe, and West Hollywood will proudly host the US premiere with a Los Angeles-based cast of performers. Other proposed activations include mural artworks on city basketball courts in celebration of the 2026 NBA All-Star Game, a Route 66-inspired public art corridor celebrating its 100th anniversary, a bold LGBTQ+ marching band performance in a city park as a renovation of a traditional football game halftime show in honor of the 2027 Super Bowl, and a vibrant mural festival to transform local businesses in 2027 as part of the Rainbow District Initiative. From March through September of 2028, all city arts programming will reflect the theme of the plan "Inventing Traditions," offering a vibrant mix of public art exhibitions, moving image works on digital billboards, performances by arts grantees, literary events, live music, and free theater in the park. We're also exploring exciting partnerships such as one with the Olympic Museums in Switzerland and Colorado Springs to bring a unique exhibition to West Hollywood, connecting our local programming to a global stage. And to support this vision- image works on digital billboards, performances by arts grantees, literary events, live music, and free theater in the park. We're also exploring exciting partnerships such as one with the Olympic Museums in Switzerland and Colorado Springs to bring a unique exhibition to West Hollywood, connecting our local programming to a global stage. And to support this vision, a special 2028 art project grant will be introduced, offering two years of funding to artists and arts organizations with bold participatory ideas. This grant is designed to spark projects that are innovative, community-driven, and globally resonant. The proposed grant guidelines will be presented to City Council for review in spring of 2026. And finally, the Aquatic and Recreation Center will be home to three impactful, lasting public art projects that reflect the city's ongoing commitment to creativity and community. First, a large-scale mural, large-scale mural is planned for the west facade of the building. When the ark was constructed, it covered an iconic mural by Shepherd Ferry. The city has envisioned inviting the artist back to reimagine his West Hollywood peace elephant for this prominent location, bringing new life to a beloved work with updated meaning and relevance. Second, a new permanent public artwork will be created for the fifth floor of the ark. This project will involve robust community engagement with the selected artists leading art-making workshops and collaborative sessions to ensure the final work is deeply connected to West Hollywood's diverse voices and stories. And third, we will introduce a rotating art exhibition inside the center. These changing installations will keep the space dynamic and responsive, providing opportunities to spotlight local artists and align with major civic milestones and regional events. It's now my pleasure to invite Laura Zucker from AEA Consulting to talk more about the community engagement efforts, the theme of "Inventing Traditions," and proposed criteria for the plan.
Well, it was really my pleasure to work on this, and this is how we got to this incredibly robust plan of activities. We designed and confirmed a comprehensive community engagement project plan to ensure broad participation among key groups from diverse backgrounds, as well as a robust and consistent strategy to communicate with them throughout the course of the project using Engage WeHo. And our artist partners, who added so much to this effort, included drag laureate Pickle, poet laureate Jen Chang, and Ari Disano. The Arts Commission unanimously adopted this theme to be explored in the public engagement at its October meeting, and it has universally resonated with the public artists and businesses consulted. Many artists and arts organizations are in the business of inventing the future, and so find that there are many aspects of their existing practice that can be amplified by this theme. We found the field to be really energized and excited by this. Now, none of these key takeaways are a surprise to any of you. They all express West Hollywood's core values, but I'm happy to address any of them individually. We also were able to develop proposed criteria for the grant program and other ways that, that everyone may participate. We're envisioning a very, very big tent in which not only those who are funded, but those who initiate unfunded projects can participate and be part of this as long as they meet proposed criteria. Now, the first few, I think, are somewhat self-evident, but again, I'm happy to answer any questions about any of them that you may have. So as you've heard, it's envisioned that there will be unique activations each year leading up to the 2028 Olympic Games. And in addition, all city-sponsored arts programming that it's presented, as Rebecca said, between March and September of 2028 will be on theme. But highlighted activities during the two-week window between the Olympics and Paralympics will really be the tent poles. And all the proposed activities, of which there are many more than Becca talked about, are detailed in the plan. So it's important to keep in mind that the city must adhere to strict regulations set by the International Olympic Committee and the U.S. Olympic and Paralympic Committee to avoid infringing unprotected Olympic intellectual property. So the use of the terms such as "Olympic," "Olympiad," "Olympian," "LA 28," "Team USA," "Paralympic," or any variations that could create an association with the Olympic Games is unfortunately prohibited without prior authorization. So for this reason, the Communications Department and Arts Division will develop an IOC-compliant official name for the art project, which is presently a placeholder.
And with that, that concludes our presentation for the evening. Happy to take questions.
Thank you. This is so exciting. I believe we still have a public commenter who signed up to speak. Is Michaela Buckley still here? Oh, there you are. Hi. I'll have you speak, and then we'll jump into our discussion. Thank you.
Just to go ahead and ask, please.
Just one second, Michaela. Okay. When you're ready.
Hi there. I'm Michaela Buckley. I introduced myself several hours ago, but we're back. I'm with Theater Commons Los Angeles, which is a service organization dedicated to theater in Los Angeles, and I would like to comment on supporting the staff recommendations for Agenda Items B7 and E4. For Item E4, I am specifically speaking on the arts and cultural programming. I was lucky enough to be invited to join the community conversations in January about arts in the Olympics, and part of my job is that I go to a lot of city council meetings and work with theaters throughout the county, and I would like to first emphasize that the City of West Hollywood is currently ahead of most other cities. So just congratulations to the staff and the work that you're all doing, and the proactive leadership that the City of West Hollywood is showing in this. And I appreciate the inner-city collaboration. It makes my job a little easier as well. Item E4 comes with three recommendations, and I would like to emphasize recommendation number two, to approve the plans for West Hollywood's Creative Triennium for 2025 through 2028, and support this three-year initiative of arts and culture programming. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I know this was held from the consent agenda because some folks had questions. I wanted to raise a couple items that came up via public comment that I thought were worth elevating in this space, particularly with a nod towards inclusivity in the Fan Zone space, and that would just be about making sure that there are sober, specific Fan Zones in that. I think that's a great comment. Came from a member of our Human Services Commission, and I appreciated that. And then one other thing I wanted to elevate, and I think I saw it as on the slides that Laura presented at the very bottom, but about making this a generational effort. And so just wanted to specifically think about how young people would be involved in this, maybe working directly with West Hollywood Elementary and even the other schools in the community on things like youth sign submission for the Route 66 Sign Program or the Mural Festival itself. And I'm sure you have many other ideas of what that would look like, but just wanted to lift up how fabulous it is an opportunity to get the young kiddos in our community invested in this early, and how grateful I am for the early investment in this work. As a public commenter noticed, it's very early for a lot of communities, and we're so fortunate to be able to string so many major events together through this early planning. Thank you. Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. Pardon me. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I just had a quick question. A community member had reached out to me. Pardon me. A community member had reached out to me in regards to the name, the Creative Triennium. Can you expand on that? Is that name set in stone? Can it be changed? Is it just an idea or a placeholder? Yeah, that's what somebody had raised up to me. Thank you.
Sure. As I mentioned, it is just a placeholder name, and we're certainly open to conversation direction from council.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having an open mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
So thank you for this robust report. So I don't like the names. I'll just be honest. I think that they don't scream Olympics to me. Triennium, great. If you asked me to spell it off the top of my head, we'd have some issues, right? But I think when I think Triennium, it just doesn't say we're preparing for the Olympics. So I would urge you to go back and kind of think a little bit more about that. I love that it's not set in stone, because that's how things are moldable, and we have some time to get it right. And I think that is something that's really important to me when we're trying to promote this. And we see, besides on a piece of paper that says 2028 Olympic Artist Grant, like if we said something like Triennium Grant, people would be like, what is that? Are we celebrating 2030, 2,300? You know, what is it really looking at? So I would urge maybe a subcommittee, give it to the mayor and the vice mayor to look into, and their committees, we're just going to keep adding on to their work. "Inventing Traditions" is great, but I don't know if it fits the right tone for what we're trying to do. I see a little bit, a little bit more after seeing the visuals of what you presented about inventing traditions for like the soccer and like the drag kind of play on that. So however, we could maybe pull out a little bit more for that inventing of what types of traditions might be helpful. I like the word "inventing," but how can I, once I saw those visuals a little bit more, it kind of started coming together. So how, I think you're getting somewhere, but how can we just flesh it out a little bit more? Because I just want to make sure that when we make our mark on this, as one of the public commenters said, but what you all really want to do, and we will do because you all are incredible individuals, is we really will be the arts capital of the world. And this was some, at the time of the, for the Olympics. And I know that this item, for me and then former council member John D'Amico, who really, you know, introduced this item together, and the council unanimously approved it at that time, you know, it's something that we really want to pay close attention to. And this is a great chance to how we uplift trans artists, you know, the LGBTQ artist groups for this funding capability. And we all know in this world that they're going to come up with something really cool. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca. I remember at one of our mini-meetings, you said we were going to potentially create a new installation of some type of sculpture art somewhere, or at some point we talked about that? I think I heard you say that during this presentation, but could you maybe elaborate a little bit more on what that might look like or the dream of it?
Sure. You're alluding to the, the permanent, long-lasting projects. We are, so we're considering a Shepherd Ferry mural on the ark. We're considering a permanent piece on the fifth floor of the ark, which would not likely be sculptural. It would be something affixed to the wall, so it could be, you know, a relief or something. And then there will for sure be some sort of temporary installations happening. You know, Santa Monica Boulevard will become a major thoroughfare, and we will populate that with temporary installations.
Yeah. And, and so I want to bring up the point, I think it was like two years ago when we talked about our favorite median by, Dan Tan is over there, right? You know? It's a great space to, I think, utilize public art. Everyone sadly will still be driving in many ways, but there will be hopefully a lot more walkability in what we can promote between now and then, and maybe how do we improve the safety standards around the street? But how do people, when they're driving down, as you know, the mayor, I think, was pointing to historic Route 66 and all of the greatness that that will become, how, what, what does that kind of, you know, sadly, nothing activated there for the reasons that I think we talked about? How are we utilizing that space in a way? Because the park is going to be jam-packed full of stuff. Hopefully, Plummer Park on the east side takes advantage of what that culture and traditional clash, I think, of, of different, you know, traditions will look like as well. But every piece of empty space in the city, I would love to just be adorned with art from around the world and artists that have been trying to really make their mark. And, and also, don't forget Mocha, or we're not supposed to call it Mocha anymore, but you know, the building across the street. And how do we utilize that space and get on our dear friends at the PDC's calendar now to really bring in something truly incredible? And I won't be forgetting about that anytime soon because we negotiated that piece as part of the PDC, we're in negotiations, and it's a incredible space. And so they probably want to get in on the Olympics a little bit, so you know, that's great. And then my last question or comment, Laura, is Culver City is, I think, finalized or in talks with New Zealand to be the host city of what we all saw when we were in Paris together and being that host city. I've randomly put out feelers to a couple of other cities, AKA, you know, France, as, you know, to say, whoa, how about West Hollywood, right? You know, as being a host city. But any communication that we could have with LA 28 or any other individual country that is starting to look at what that would be. Our hotels might be, I don't know what, I know the contracts are very specific, and it's great to hear that Visit West Hollywood is just going, I mean, my eyes just got really big because that's really incredible and something that we've been saying. But if there is a country that is interested, listening to this conversation right now, to have a host city in whatever way, shape, and form, I know the mayor and the vice mayor have done such an incredible job doing the different consulates that were at Pride with us and wanting to be invested there. And I know the vice mayor loves our Nordic countries, mainly because there's no sun, but specifically, whatever way we could help promote, you know, the availability of our city to have that type of negotiation and be home to something like that would just be, I think, you're already hitting out of the park, you're going to hit it out of the park even more, but how can we continue to do that and promote our businesses and tourism and travel in every way, shape, and form? And thank you, Laura. You are just an icon in every way, shape, and form in the artist world. And we, to have you and the work that you're doing, I see it on the plans, and, you know, I showed my partner the program, I remember after we had our, our talk, and he was like, wow. You know, it's like the thought that's going into it. I just really want to thank you on behalf of the city and the art staff and the entire team on the hard work that you're doing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Heilman?
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. Just to follow up on what Councilmember Erickson said, I think he's referring to hospitality houses that various countries and sometimes regions put together. I've drafted an agenda item to give direction to Laura and her staff to reach out to consulates, to look at what we can do to incentivize, to look at fee waivers, and also to reach out to property owners who may have available spaces that would be appropriate for those kind of hospitality houses. So hopefully that we'll be able to make it to our next agenda item. I want to thank you for all of the work that's been done here. I do have some comments specifically about the arts and cultural aspect of it. I want us all to remember that we have a very, we'll have a very broad market, right? The entire world potentially could be visiting, or people from all over the world, and I think it's an opportunity for us to share what is unique about West Hollywood and really embrace all of these visitors. I, I agree with at least two of my colleagues. Triennium does not resonate with me at all. I don't know what it means, and I think it's off-putting. I also have to say, and I apologize to our consultant who said that the "Inventing Traditions" was universally, that it universally resonated. It did not resonate at all with me. It resonated as, again, not something that said anything about West Hollywood or about our community. It seemed like it was a thematic device that could be dropped down anywhere. So I really don't like that theme. It just, I don't know what it means, and I don't know how it speaks to the unique culture of our community. A number of the specifics that are in here, I think, are very exciting and will obviously be well-received by the public, but I have to say I'm not particularly supportive of that aspect of it, both the, the theme and the triennium title.
Thank you. Any other comments, feedback from Councilmember Hing?
Thank you, Mayor. With regards to the triennium name, is there any way to get more involvement from, say, the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission or the subcommittee? I don't know what the best case scenario is for that.
Sure, we can definitely take it back to the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission for discussion.
Or perhaps if the consultant can come back with a variety of names, so that way the, the commission can weed it down, or the pride subcommittee, the mayor and the vice mayor, however you think would be fit for this. Thank you.
Councilmember Meister?
No, I was just going to suggest that once you come up with something at the, at the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission, if we would be bringing it back here. So I, it's the theme, and it's the, and it's the name, right? Those two things.
Are there any other pieces of feedback from this body? Are there any other pieces of feedback from this body? Councilmember Erickson? Go ahead.
I know I said I, I've shared the comments about not liking the names. I don't know if I even, I don't know if I want to get in the back and forth about the names in a weird way. I kind of, I don't, I don't know if I want to enter into that war, you know, war of words, not an actual war. But perhaps the greatest, the great minds can go take care of that because I, I don't want to have us five to six. You think triennium's there, then just wait. So anyways, but I, maybe, I don't know if I really want to be involved in the nitty-gritty, just maybe coming back with that understanding, so.
Does it feel important to this council to have something come back with full approval? Or that we don't like that and it's?
I mean, there obviously was
A lot of input.
A feeling about the name and the theme. So I would suggest to come back to us so that we don't have any bad feelings if we don't like it, you know, coming forward. So I think that's, it's a worthwhile discussion. It doesn't have to be an hour, but.
If, if I may, I, I think, I think the name is absolutely doable and, and obviously should be worked with, with your communications team, because that's what it's all about, right? Communicating something that's clear, that people can get excited about, and that they can robustly promote. So I, I think working together, taking that back to the Arts and Culture Commission and then to you. We're really far along on the theme in the sense that the Arts and Culture Commission already approved it. And on the basis of their approval in October, we took that out to the artists and the arts community and the public. And while you're completely right, nothing is 100%. This came as close as anything I've ever seen in terms of 98%. There was almost, in the artists and arts organization meetings, there was no dissension. There was only excitement on the theme. I think people have really leaned into it and it was used intrinsically as part of the communications and community engagement process itself. So I'm presenting this because I think there were real concerns about backtracking on this and what would be needed to go, you, you would have to unravel work essentially going back to October in, in order to do this. And let me try just very, very quickly again to provide some clarity on it. It wasn't randomly selected by any means. West Hollywood is the city that has invented itself. You are all constantly leading the way in terms of assessing how we take current traditions and make them viable for who we are today and tomorrow. This has actually been reflected back by the Olympic Games, which is different every four years. And many things that we accept as inviolate old traditions. Just think of the Olympic theme that we heard over and over and over again last summer. That was actually written only in 1984 by John Williams here in Los Angeles. We in LA set the chart, the course for the future and West Hollywood is at the forefront of helping us decide which of our traditions are worth holding on to and which we must move forward to advance. So we consider this thematically, authentically and bespoke to West Hollywood, but also to our greater region as a statement of value.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'll speak for myself in saying that it did resonate in a way. And what you just said about West Hollywood is very moving and beyond. But in the context of the Olympics itself, how folks are often looking for not just that moment in time, but the ongoing impact and legacy. And I really thought about the way that this term inventing traditions would think about the moment the Olympics offer for us to set a legacy as we move forward too. So it really resonated with me. I also don't tend to get back and forth with artists and themes and all that sort of thing and thought you brought something forward that was terrific. It seems like the name is maybe the bigger place that we can land on. Also, you know, I don't imagine the creative triennium is what people in the public largely are going to see or experience when it comes to what we're actually offering. So it'll be less a part of that and more a part of the package that we're constantly referring back to. So I'm understanding of that. I'll go back to councilmember Hing and then I see councilmember Meister and vice mayor Heilman.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the work. I mean, West Hollywood has never been a city to play things safe. This is an ambitious plan and which is why I know that it'll be executed flawlessly. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Meister.
Yeah, I, I didn't have a problem with the theme and I, I kind of, I think the invent tradition might just be interpreted differently by different people. But to me, it was like where there was nothing, West Hollywood took it and made it a tradition. So that's, that's how I took it. The name, I, you know, I wasn't crazy about it. I wasn't going to make a big deal about it, but you know, I'm, I'm fine with changing the triennium thing. But the theme is fine for me.
Vice Mayor Heilman?
Yes, not to be difficult, but, and I am difficult, but you, you reached out to all of these people, all of these arts organizations, not all of them West Hollywood organizations, by the way, and you went to the advisory board and now you're basically telling us we have to agree with the theme because we're too far down the line.
Well, no, obviously you can do whatever you want. I just want you to be aware of how thoroughly it has been explored.
Well, the first time it was explored with me, I had a very negative reaction. So I, I appreciate all the work and all the time and, and I may be an outlier here, but I just don't think it makes sense to ask council for approval when by the time it gets to us, we're being told it's too late for you to change anything because we've already invested too much time and we've already reached out to all of these artists and they are all on board with it.
Well, it's never too late because of course yours is the final approval, but you should be aware of the process that has been gone through to get to this point.
We are reinventing right now.
Right. Well, let me ask my colleagues, when was the first time you heard of the theme?
I was made aware of it by my arts commissioner when I found out about what the theme was. And I did share your same experience.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion deliberation that we want to, or feedback we want to share? Do you have what you need besides an official motion?
We do want to clarify a few things.
Yeah, go ahead.
So thank you so much for, for the feedback tonight. And we do have the direction regarding returning back to the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission. They do have a meeting this Thursday. That agenda has already been posted, but they do have meetings monthly. So there'll be another meeting in July, another meeting in August, September, et cetera. As was mentioned by one of the public speakers, as well as several of the staff and consultants here, we are the first. We are leading the pack. So we do have time, but I will just for cautionary purposes, remind everyone that February of 2026, when the NBA All-Star Game will be happening in Intuit Dome is just around the corner. And things like the murals on the basketball courts, which are part of this plan, do take time. We need to do a call for artists. We need to get the measurements and make sure we can get those installed beautifully in time for that. So we will be moving aggressively as possible to return back to you, to go back to the Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission. But also things such as disco foot, which I saw resonate really well from the council here, as well as in the community meetings and discussions, that being for June, July of 2026, when the World Cup is here. That too, being its first international, you know, resonating here, its first US debut, also takes time to plan the traveling and the securing of all that and any type of logistics accordingly. So we will also be moving aggressively on this plan. So I would imagine you'd be seeing us back soon, very soon, and also back to Arts and Cultural Affairs Commission very soon as well. Thank you.
Anything further?
No, if, if we could just get clarity on the direction, because I was hearing different things. I, I understand that the name, we want to talk about the name of the plan.
You're going to come back to us, I think.
Yes. But also, also the theme? Or was it just one or the other?
Well, I think majority of the council is comfortable with the theme. So I, I would, unless I'm incorrect there.
Are you, are you comfortable with the theme?
I'm not comfortable with it.
Yeah, I'm not. I would like to have both come back. That's my personal opinion, but that's just where I'm at.
So there's at least two of us who have concerns about the theme.
I think it remains two, unless councilmember Hing?
I'm okay with the theme. She sold me, you sold me when you were talking about it right now.
Then I'll move that we move forward with the item and the recommendations here with direction to staff to come back with a new title for it, rather than creative triennium or whatever it was being called.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So we have a motion in a second to adopt staff's recommendation, however, to return with some other names for consideration.
That's correct.
Thank you.
And then mayor, you also wanted us to-
And the motion passes 5-0. Sorry, Laura.
I had quick comments on B7.
That's what I was just going to ask. You wanted to discuss that in coordination.
Yep. So B7 is the art plan for the West Hollywood Aquatic Recreation Center, which is so fabulous. My one specific comment was about the plans for under the staircase and, you know, question or comment about including the potential for sculpture art to hang or to be featured in some sort of 3D capacity beyond just mural. That was it. So hopefully more of a comment. And I'm seeing head nods. I was walking under there the other day and imagined clout, you know, something. It just, that's all. Thank you.
As you're looking at art in the facility, can you also make sure that it isn't going to be distracting to those who are playing in those facilities? That, I think that's a concern.
In fact, none of the spaces I, 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 majority of the spaces are not inside of facilities. So the, the gymnasium, for example, were more hands-off. It's more of the lobby common use spaces.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
It's really exciting plan to see all of that come to life.
I just have a quick question.
We have one question on the floor.
So the art plan for West Hollywood Aquatic Recreation Center, when are we going to talk about the art plan for the items that are currently like in Plummer Park? I feel like we're giving, my only comment is, you know, we're giving much due to the west side of town, but it'd be great to have my side of town, our side of town, maybe a more comprehensive look as we continue to update and have temporary installments in the ways that we do. The Plummer Park improvement plan is ongoing, but as, as councilmember Meister and I know it's going to take a while, but how can we continue to beautify, I think, with the cowboy, whatever statue that you had, you had a lot of great, you know, looks. But how can we continue to include murals and art and opportunities for artists to, you know, beautify a beautiful space, but, you know, make it even better on that side of town?
We have a motion in a second?
So the motion on the floor is to approve the implementation of the art plan for the West Hollywood Aquatic Recreation Center with consideration for sculpture underneath the staircase and to ensure that the artwork isn't too distracting. Is that accurate?
Yeah. And I don't think it was limited to sculpture underneath.
The addition of it. Yeah.
Yeah.
And is it also to add, to look at how Plummer Park can be utilized for some art as well, or?
If, if the maker of the motion wouldn't mind.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure.
So we're adding Plummer Park. Okay. And we will start moving.
Thank you.
And the motion passes 5-0.
We're on item E5, the city of West Hollywood responds to Los Angeles County regional fires. I see our staff in motion. And I believe councilmember Meister, you kept this off. We have one public commenter, if we can hear from Kevin Burton while staff's in movement.
And we don't need a, a report. We just, I have a lot of, just comments.
Kevin Burton, come on down.
Good evening again, council. Kevin Burton, city of West Hollywood. And I just want to consider one element of the staff report, and that is they're planning on a deep analysis of the city's emergency response plan. And there's a lot to that plan, but one element that's commented on a couple of times in the current update is evacuation routes. And the key word there is not routes, it's evacuation. Because the gorilla in that room, which municipalities like cities don't ever seem to comment on, is how people are going to evacuate. And we have seen so many times up and down the state that people who are told to evacuate, all of a sudden, in a rush, everyone tries to leave in their cars all at once. And we discovered in the LA fires and Palisades, what happens. In the local fire running Canyon, I live on Fountain Avenue. I was going back and forth on Fountain Avenue that evening. I didn't get the emergency announcement until after I had been there and seen the fire. That's how I found out about it. People were evacuating down from Hollywood, down all the residential streets on Fountain Avenue and elsewhere. Traffic was moving very slowly. Some people couldn't get out of their driveways, on the side streets. Everybody wants to leave all at once. People need to have an option other than cars. You need to plan for it. Could be a sit-down Vespa scooter. Could be all the people who have bikes in their garages. I was on a bike. I went back and forth along Fountain, no problem. And I think the city, in the upcoming analysis, the emergency response plan, should think about methods of evacuation, giving advice to people about that problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe councilmember Meister, you wanted to share a few comments? I don't know if staff wanted to also highlight anything from the report. Go ahead.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need a full report. So are you considering this an after-action report? Danny? Are you considering this an after-action report?
This is the, the city's after-action report, yes. Yes, I, yes, we are.
Okay. Because I'm going through the same thing with my job. And so that's, I kind of looked at it with that lens. And I wondered if we shouldn't have a survey to West Hollywood residents to see how they felt West Hollywood, the city responded to the fires and, you know, for suggestions for improvement. Just like I will have to send a survey to, you know, our, my, you know, my organization to see how, how we, you know, responded. I think that the people that we're, you know, talking to, those are the ones that we need to get that information from. Because what I felt in the report, and I thought it was, you know, very thorough and I appreciate that, is that the, the confusion and feeling of lack of communication from some of the residents, especially those on the east side because they were getting communications from the city of Los Angeles, it, it wasn't as clear-cut as like, we did all this communication. We did. We did a lot of communication, but it wasn't necessarily effective because of what we were dealing with, you know, with the city of LA and the county doing as well the same thing. So I would suggest that we do some kind of survey. Not everyone uses social media, and as we talked about it earlier, not everyone like thinks to look at X, to look for a posting, you know, from the city of West Hollywood. So I do think that it is really important that we get people on Nixle, but also, I mean, there are lists of cell phones out there, right? Cell phone numbers. I mean, can't we do something with an opt-out rather than an opt-in? Because I think opt-out is a lot easier and you're going to retain a lot more people than expecting them to opt-in.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to that point, councilmember Meister, and thank you for, for bringing that up and raising that point. One of the things that we did do is we enhanced our reach, our communication within the community. So Everbridge, which is the platform that Nixle operates under, they do have a feature that you're capable of actually acquiring lists, as you just mentioned. And so although we have almost 8,000 opt-in Nixle subscribers, we have 42,000 connections within the community as a result of purchasing, right, and enhancing those lists. within the community as a result of purchasing, right, and enhancing those lists through Everbridge. So we do have that capability, and these are folks that did not opt-in, and so we do have the ability to utilize that list.
Great. And again, it's easier to, it's easier for us to ask people to opt-out if they don't want to hear information about a disaster. I mean, who's going to opt-out? So on page, on page, page 14 of the report, it says, it says how we have to, in the communications, say something like, "This is a message from the City of West Hollywood for the residents and businesses of West Hollywood." That's great, but we also have to get our neighbors to do the same, right? We need the City of Los Angeles to do the same thing. When they send out a text, they need to say, "This is the City of LA," where, you know, "We're texting," or "We're texting City of LA residents," so that it's very clear. Because we can, we can control our own chaos, but we can't control the chaos caused by someone else. I was just curious, on page 17, you talked about the, about the tax exemption and the, and the, you know, because we had done the urgency ordinance for evacuees. And I was just wondering, did we really need to do it? It's looking like we're not getting a lot of people utilizing that. So I think that's important for staff to come back to us about whether or not we need that urgency ordinance, because I think we had it for a year, and I don't know if that, we need that if only, you know, the only one person who applied was, didn't qualify because he wasn't a fire, he wasn't a wildfire survivor. So that's something for staff to come back about. And then similar to what Kevin Burton brought up, I had on page 18, you know, that communications has to include, you know, how to evacuate, evacuation routes, and where to evacuate to. Because people were just leaving their homes, they didn't know where to go. They, where were they going? Down the hill. I mean, that was it, right? And then regarding, regarding access and functional needs, if residents have applied for and are receiving social services, we should have, we should have contact information for emergency alerts. We should make that part of what we ask for when we're providing services. We get, you know, obviously, we get a lot of information from our residents. We should say, "We need to have an emergency number for you." Because then we know we can connect with them because they're, they're the most vulnerable, and they're going to be the ones that aren't, aren't going to be able to evacuate, or are going to have questions or problems or need assistance. And then on page 19, we talk, you talk about CERT and the, and the fact to you, that, you know, utilizing CERT more, but did we use CERT in this, you know, in this incident? We didn't use our CERT grads.
We did not. No, we did not.
And I think we should think about how we could have used them, and that should be part of this, this report, is what could we have done utilizing CERT people, whether it was getting them out to the east side of town to help people, to help evacuees. That's what we have CERT for. And even if, even if it wasn't a dire situation for them to be there, it's good training for them to do it. And then I think that was pretty much it. Yeah. So just, you know, those couple of things. Thank you.
I wanted to just add a couple of comments as well. I'd be curious if this feedback included specific intel from the experience that our service providers had connecting with community and what their experiences were like. I know when I spoke with a couple of community members who I've reached out to, who I know were homebound that evening and wanted to see how they were concerned, they were already in touch with some of their service providers, which is tremendous, but it'd be helpful to hear directly from those service providers about how they're thinking about that sort of layered response that they can provide to those direct community members in need. I think the evacuate, the point of evacuation without vehicle dependency is critical beyond the, you know, people living with disabilities, homebound, older adults. There were community members who had children and cats and no car, and were very concerned about how they were going to get out. So I think it does, you know, raise questions about the utility of the fleets that we have available in our midst, but also what that means to sort of engage community members at a different level. And I know these are really big questions that we're putting out there for scenarios that we hope never, never happen, and each disaster is very different, which I'm also really aware of. I think Councilmember Meister's point about engaging community at scale is also really valuable, but I've been thinking about it through the lens of buildings themselves and how apartment building managers who live on site could better organize their own building and provide this. So I know we send out notices and information to those buildings, and maybe throughout the course of time, there are, you know, steps and trainings and tools that can be shared with those managers to help think about how they can better organize and support their community members. I think when we think about that, you know, building by building, block by block, we're actually doing this work in a really good way and doesn't, you know, ask the city and its limited staff and capacity to take all this on, but we're really empowering the community to build a new muscle for itself and how it cares for itself for the long haul of what we're up against. But this was really important, and I appreciate you all putting the time to this to see it. Thank you. Are there any other questions from my colleagues tonight or comments on this? Okay, just the resiliency, girls. Thank you very much. I don't think we need a motion. It was just sort of a receive and file. Great. Is that right, City Clerk? No motion needed. Let's skip it.
Yeah, it was direct stop to continue, provide direction or feedback. I don't think we need a motion.
Great. No motion. Okay. Thank you so much. No motion. We're good. Move to item E6, which is the Commission and Advisory Board appointments and reappointments, and we have a few left. City Clerk, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. Hopefully, this is our last time doing, or maybe not. So the first one we have is for the Historic Preservation Commission to do the two at-large appointments.
And I'm going to ask us to skip this one. I still need some information about things that I haven't been able to get yet, so I do apologize.
Oh, no problem.
And when this comes back to us, can you identify which individuals would meet the qualifications for us to be a certified historic preservation organization? So that, I think, is the missing piece for me as well.
Yeah, so I can indicate if, who, if anyone on the current commission meets those qualifications, which currently I know is Gil Ostergren and possibly one other individual. And then I can indicate of the applicants who meets the qualifications to keep us on. Yeah.
As well as who's eligible to be trained for it as well, because, so I'm looking at the questions, right? And regarding my, which I think is also be helpful for the, for the council to have, for example, the CLG status would not be automatically revoked if we don't have a qualified maintained professional in the commission. It's just something that is encouraged, strongly encouraged. That's about it. That's the wording. But I do understand that individuals must have an education, professional background, and a designated field, but if they're urban planners with history and doing some of this work, they can also be eligible for training as well. So I think that's something that we should know additionally.
Okay.
I would like to know, because I do understand one of them, who I was prepared to support tonight, is eligible, to my understanding.
Okay. So I will have, get that information from planning staff.
Yeah. You can just get the email that Jennifer Elkire sent to Jennifer Del Toro when I asked her all these questions. So, you know, it was a very good email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so then we'll push that one to, I don't know if we could do it July 7th, because we'll only have four council members, so we may have to come back in August. So we'll go to Public Facilities Infrastructure and, or Recreation Infrastructure Commission. Do we have any nominations for PFC?
I would nominate Deepa Krishna.
Okay.
And I would like to nominate Santo Ragnow.
Okay. Any others? Seeing none, we will keep our current two at-large appointees then. Now we'll go to Social Justice Advisory Board.
I think we have one applicant, but wasn't he previously on the advisory board and then left?
He wasn't, he was a direct appointee who wasn't appointed as a direct appointee, so he requested to move to an applicant as an at-large.
Oh, okay.
And that is Kareem, correct?
Justin Powell.
Justin Powell.
Oh, sorry, Justin Powell.
Kareem did not respond.
Got it.
Correct. We have not received a response from Kareem Abey.
And I didn't see, was, were there any issues with attendance with Justin when he was on?
No.
Okay.
All right. I will nominate Justin Powell.
And that board is still short one member after this appointment? Or that's it then? Okay, great.
That's it. Yeah, we did the other, Jorge Separak was the other at-large appointee that we did.
That's right.
So if there are no others, then Justin Powell will be the Social Justice Advisory Board second at-large?
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. And then are we ready to do Transgender Advisory Board? No?
I'm not.
Okay. So we'll bring PFC and Transgender Advisory Board, I'm sorry. We will bring HPC back with the additional information the council requested on who is eligible, and then what the requirements are, and of the individuals currently appointed, who can be trained. And then we'll bring back the Transgender Advisory Board as well.
And has the Transgender Advisory Board been meeting regularly?
Yes, they have.
Wonderful. Thank you.
There haven't been any quorum issues that I've been made aware of with any of our boards or commissions recently.
Those are, don't knock on something wood, Melissa. Thank you very much. I'm superstitious still.
Thank you.
And I'll plan to bring this back at the first meeting in August, just again because we only have four in July.
We almost got there. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll move to item F2 then, local policy to defend city officials and employees for criminal actions by the federal government in compliance with state law. Wow. I'll, City Attorney, I just have a quick, couple pieces I wanted to add to this. I know it was going to move to consent, otherwise, I believe. And my comments are that, given that this is something very, you know, specific and frankly, you know, kind of concerning, I think, for people, I want to make sure that city staff have an opportunity to meet and discuss this specifically, and I just want to name that so it can be heard, and hope that that conversation can happen sooner rather than later. I also know that in other cities, Pasadena was a great example, I saw it come up on my social media feed, they issued a notice very quickly for a plan to pull down all programming in the community on a weekend. I think it was a strategic choice by the city to not encourage community to come out, but I want to ensure that as part of conversations that are happening internally with staff, as part of the protection for, of course, staff who are putting themselves on the front line, and also the community, that we're putting in place those sort of contingency plans to quickly create a communications plan that can get out to the community should we be in a scenario where we are creating another layer of concern. And I know I say that on the back of having very big conversations around major events that are within the, you know, security scope of the federal government in different ways, but I think at the very local level, in the same model, we saw the City of Pasadena do just this past weekend, is something that I would just ask as part of this item, that we create those sort of plans and contingencies for.
Yeah, I think there are ongoing conversations happening to try and assess what type of situations could present themselves here and what the appropriate response would be.
Perfect. Thank you. That's my concern. Thank you. Are there any other comments about this piece? Can you move forward? Great. Okay. And I believe we're on to item F5. And Councilmember Meister, you had some questions, but this is Vice Mayor Hellman's item.
Yes.
Do you need any?
I don't, no, no. I guess my question or comment is, how would this impact, like, the city's liability, like, with healthcare benefits and, you know, and whether this has been studied?
Well, the whole point of giving direction to staff and the city attorney was to ask them to bring forward those kind of issues, so I certainly think that needs to be looked at. I think we're dealing with a very, very, very small subset of individuals, but I share your concerns that we do not add any fiscal burden to the city, so I'm hoping that as this is looked at, that that will be one of the considerations that our city attorney and our city staff looks at.
I'm going to stay in only because I want to wait to see what those, what that is, but I appreciate your looking into that.
Yeah. And at this point, all we're doing is giving direction to come back. We're not actually doing any amendments to our domestic partnership ordinance, but it is giving direction to look at expanding it, to recognize that there are some people now as, living in households where there are throuple, and making sure that we address their needs and provide whatever protection we can for them as a family and for their children.
Did you want to make a motion on your item? Great.
And Councilmember Meister, just for the record, what was the reason for the extension?
I don't feel like I have enough information to make this decision.
Okay.
Thank you. We will move to excluded consent, item B11, the approval of amendment number four to the agreement for services with MV Transportation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Laura Byrie, your Director of Economic Development. I'm joined tonight for this presentation by Paolo Kespredit, your Business Development Manager, and also in the audience are Judy Smith, Vice President for MV Transit, and Albert Flores, General Manager for the West Hollywood team for MV Transit. I'm going to turn it over to Paolo Kespredit at this time to give a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Tonight's item on B11 is a one-year extension of MV Transit through June 30th of 2026. In February of 2025, the city released an RFP for transit services, but due to the recent reorganization of the city, including the creation of the Transportation and Mobility Division, staff postponed this RFP process. As such, we'll be working towards releasing an RFP by the end of this calendar year to allow for the new division to be fully staffed while transitioning these duties out of business development. So tonight, we're asking for a one-year extension for the contract through June 30th of '26 in the amount of approximately $3.4 million. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister?
Yeah, and thank you for presenting briefly. As I mentioned to you, my concerns were the fact that we were bringing in a new transportation department, and that decisions should be theirs, and, and I needed to clarify, you know, how long the, how long the amendment would be for and, and all of that. So thank you.
While this item's here, I just want to say, I really do think that with the upcoming new RFP, there are really big opportunities for deeper collaboration across the west side specifically, and I'd be really excited to think about where there could be shared routes and services. I have long dreamed for one direct bus straight to Santa Monica or straight to Culver City, and I think the region is really beckoning for something like that, especially as we look into the future of all of these great cultural and sporting events that are happening. And I think with the opportunity for an RFP, we also have a chance to look at the fleet configuration, which are really big buses moving through our neighborhoods right now, and maybe create more nimble routes and flexibility. So just glad I had a chance to throw that out there. I wasn't going to pull it from the agenda to do so, but now that I had a chance, thank you. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues?
Thank you to the MV people for staying so late.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
Passes 5-0.
And with that, we are at the end of our agenda. Ooh. We'll go to final public comment period. Anything come in?
I do not have anyone signed up for the second public comment period.
The 11th hour, literally? Okay. Then we'll go to Councilmember Comments and Meeting Attendance Reports. Would anyone like to begin?
Sure. So I want to thank our colleague, Councilmember Meister for, and her sister Debbie for organizing the No Kings Rally. It was wonderful. I want to thank all of the people involved in organizing. I want to thank all of the people involved in organizing the Juneteenth event. I attended a number of community events. I also, there are news reports that there is now a ceasefire in the war between Israel and Iran. I know many of our residents have friends and family in one or both of those countries. And I know it's been a very difficult time and our hearts go out to you. And I hope that this will bring at least some, if not temporary, a permanent peace in the area. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to go next? Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Plummer Park Ad-Hoc Committee, San Monica Bay Restoration Commission. I want to thank the city hall staff for being so kind to the Ripon High School Social Justice Alliance, including my, our incredible mayor for walking them through everything. Thank you, Andy, and everyone that spent some time with them. They had a great time. They, all of them made it back to Ripon, Wisconsin, safe and sound. I attended the Book Soup 50th Anniversary Event, the Juneteenth Event. Congratulations to staff and the Social Justice Advisory Board and helped my 47th Saturday in Plummer Park event this last weekend. Additionally, I just want to say congratulations to Councilmember Meister on the No Kings March and to all that attended, as well as her sister. I was watching on Instagram Live from different channels from afar. I was in Washington DC where Brian had a premiere at the Kennedy Center for a piece he did. And so I was really jealous to see all the great stuff happening. And I happened to have to be there during that horrible military parade that no one attended. So it was really great to see the dead silence there and the robust activity out here. So congratulations. I additionally won't be at the July 7th meeting. As alluded to, I will be out of town on vacation with family. I just also want to thank my colleagues, several of them, for a few items tonight, especially the Film Initiative item and to the public commentators who spoke on it. I am too concerned about the status of Hollywood and it's great to see the local artists come about. Additionally, thanks Councilmember Meister for co-sponsoring the sirens item with me. All that we can do to help prevent people, especially in a major event and last resort, the better. And her expertise on emergency preparedness is definitely something that I, is really good to see and how we can continue to move forward. And then additionally, B14, the dog park at Plummer Park. It is a great first step, something that Councilmember Meister and I have been advocating for, for a while. And I know the community is starting to get, some of them that weren't able to know about what was going on but are getting more and more updated on it and really excited for that to move forward and come about for the, our four-legged friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hayne?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended various events throughout the community, two which include Judy Garland Day ribbon cutting ceremony at Beach Trappacana. I toured the Seeds of Hope and Jewish Family Services with staff earlier this week. It was an amazing tour just to get to see what our social service partners do for our community. Seeing them feed our unhoused folks, seeing them distribute organic groceries to our older adult residents in the community was fantastic. Just seeing people on the front line was amazing. I want to thank staff for, and the Social Justice Advisory Board for putting on another successful, putting on a successful Juneteenth Day celebration. Great food, great vendors, great community, bringing people together and just uplifting Black joy as we remember that, as we remember this for Juneteenth and to celebrate our Black community. I attended the Imperial Court of LA in Hollywood, raising money for the Imperial Court Burial Fund. And I wanted to thank Councilmember Meister and her sister Debbie for putting on an amazing No Kings Rally. The Meister Sisters showed up and did it. And our community thanks you for it. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Meister.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. So I attended the Juneteenth event, which I think will just continue to grow. I think it's, it's, it was, it was very well done. On the consent calendar, on B15, that was where there were 113 amendments to agreements that we needed to review. I, I just think that it should come to us a different way, maybe by department and staggered so that we don't have 113 amendments to, amendments to agreements to review on top of a full agenda and a 300-page budget document. So I would just ask staff to be sensitive to that. On item 16, the agreement with Chaddell, since Chaddell is providing services for the HPC Commission specifically, I think it would be a good idea to get feedback from the HPC commissioners to determine their level, the level of satisfaction with Chaddell's work. And I would like to see planning go to RFP for that, you know, when this amendment is nearing expiring or expiration. The work that, you know, I don't know if they were necessarily the part of the review process for Great Hall, Long Hall, and then Green Acre. But both of those had to be sent back because of a lack of information, which, you know, show, that's another good reason to have someone who is experienced and a professional as a commissioner on that, on that commission. On F3, Public Safety Sirens for Emergency Alerts, thank you, Councilmember Erickson, for initiating and allowing me to co-sponsor. I would also suggest that whatever audio system we put, especially in the parks, that perhaps they be multipurpose so that we can use them for community events as well. So that way, we, it's not only just for emergency alerts, but also for events like rallies. One announcement, Saturday, June 28th, at 10:00 AM at West Hollywood City Council Chambers, please join us for our Healthy City by Design Symposium, which will explore the fundamental role that design, programming, construction, and urban policy initiatives can play in supporting healthier urbanized settings. It will dive into key challenges and opportunities that lie ahead regarding sustainability, climate change, ecological systems, material selections, comfort, aging, food security, construction-related mitigation, resource management resiliency, and how these relate to health and wellness goals that might be pursued in the future. So I think it's going to be a great program. We have a really great panel and I know that I will be there. And then lastly, I just want to, you know, on the No Kings Rally, I just want to thank, first of all, I want to thank the speakers who were incredible, the volunteers that we had, and my colleagues for their support. Staff and the city manager, they were amazing. I want to thank the attendees. I, I think there were close to 3,000 attendees. It was pretty amazing. Most of them were residents. I want to thank my sister Debbie for not only being a co-organizer, but for being my rock. And I thank my dogs for their patience as well. So I, thanks everyone for that.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Erickson.
Yes, I would just like to also adjourn and one I just got from a community member for Verla Joan Cole, Jo Cole Scott, who was the mother to Adam Crowley, a member of the community who recently passed away. And I'll provide staff with that information. Thank you.
Thank you. And to just round out Councilmember Comments, myself, my attendance, I attended the California League of Cities Transportation Communications and Public Works Policy Committee meeting, the Clean Power Alliance, RFO meeting, where we're searching for new energy projects out there to scoop up their energy. The Metro Service Council, the Sanitation District Committee meeting, the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Tenant Protections meeting. Of course, the No Kings Rally, which was truly memorable. And I also want to give a shout out to John B. Scott and others for their incredible photography that will truly, you know, be legacy for that park. And then I also attended the West Side Cities Council of Government, where I'm really honored to be voted in as the next chair of that organization and serve alongside the new Vice Chair, Sharona Nazarian, the mayor of Beverly Hills. It's a historic moment for the West Side COG, two women serving in leadership for the first time in at least over a decade. So really excited for that opportunity. And then finally, I had the opportunity, and really surreal and immense life moment for me, being at the US Conference of Mayors this past week in Tampa. Amidst everything going on, it was a really heartening moment to see such camaraderie and support shared for mayors across the country about what we're experiencing in our local communities, a sense of real resilience and possibility for transformation because of what we're able to do at the local level. That's reflected in what we're seeing, not just the horrific ICE raids themselves that are happening in these, are the local neighboring communities, but cities across the country, but in the heroism, the effectiveness in strategy and the moral clarity that's really coming from community and rising up against them. I want to echo what our Vice Mayor said and just say that my heart is really with the people who are suffering here, near and far from the decisions made by a small room of even smaller men. And may the chorus of lasting peace continue to grow. And I just want to say that, you know, being at the Conference of Mayors was such a reflection of the impact that West Hollywood's had in such a short period of time. It wasn't me that they were coming up to say, it was the city that they wanted to say what their connection was to. And to receive such love and adoration from people from all around the country who have experienced West Hollywood in so many important and memorable ways is just something I want to continue to give back to others and let folks know the impact that we're creating as staff, as a community, as people, being a part of this community is truly, you know, spreading from all across the country in really powerful ways. And I just thank you all for being a part of that and thank you all for this opportunity to be a part of it in this way, too. So we're up against a lot, but together, we are doing amazing things. And that's so reflected in the budget that we are really excited to approve tonight. So it's been a great meeting. It's not midnight and we're getting out of here now. And we'll see you all again July 7th, 6:00 PM, Council Chambers. Thank you.